Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the annual town meeting to order. My name is Bill Guevea. I'm the deputy moderator, and I'll be moderating tonight. Town moderator Walter Eichel is unavailable and out of town. And to my right is Lucia Longhurst, our town clerk. Before we get started, I would like to note the passing of a longtime Norton resident and someone with great ties to the community this past week, Mrs. Debbie Cameron, who, aside from her own contributions, her husband Gary is a longtime town resident and been very active in the VFW and so many other things. And her son, Jim Cameron, who is my neighbor, is one of Norton's finest and a police sergeant on our police department, and we're very sorry to hear the passing. So I would ask you, please, to join me in a moment of silence in memory of Debbie Cameron and in respect of the Cameron family. Thank you. Now I'd ask everyone to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, deliberate, and just as a law.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let me first tell you that we have a special town meeting within the annual, so when we get to 7:15, I must recess the annual town meeting, go to the special town meeting, we will then complete the special town meeting, and then we will come back to the annual town meeting. So if you have both warrants and we're jumping around, that's why we're jumping around, and I just want you to know that beforehand. Let me first just go over some of the basic rules for tonight, although I'm not sure there's anybody who hasn't been here before, but still, that's a good thing. I'd ask everyone to make sure that you find a seat. Registered voters may sit in these sections down here. If you are a non-registered voter, non-registered voter in York, you must sit up in the seats up there marked for non-registered voters. If you sit up there and you're a registered voter and you try to vote, we won't recognize your vote, so please make sure that you're seated in a voting section if you are a voter. And the town clerk informed me that they've handed out these hickish purplish pieces of paper so that when you vote by hand vote, if you can hold them up, that helps the moderators' elderly eyes to see you and know that you're voting. If you wish to address this meeting tonight, you must do so only after being recognized by the moderator. There are microphones in the back, and there's a microphone down here at the thing. If you want to speak, just come down and stand, and please wait to be recognized. When speaking, please identify yourself by name and address so the town clerk can keep the record. Please try to keep your remarks brief and to the point, and confine them only to the matter under consideration at the time. All speakers tonight will be treated with courtesy by the moderator and by everyone else in the room. No speaker will be allowed to use the meeting for personal attacks on any individual. All remarks should be directed towards the moderator, and while I will allow questions to be asked of individuals, I will not allow cross-examination types of discussion from the floor. In recognizing people to speak, I will endeavor to call upon those who have not yet spoken on a topic before recognizing those who have already spoken. I will, so if you're in line, and you've already spoken twice, and there's somebody behind you, and they haven't spoken at all, if I skip to them, it's not that I don't like you or anything like that, instead of trying to get people who haven't spoken first. I will recognize motions to move the question, but if, in my opinion, there are still people waiting who have important things to add to the discussion or may now, I will exercise my authority not to accept a motion to move the question under those circumstances. If a standing vote is required, you will be instructed to stand at your seats until your vote is counted. If a ballot vote is required, we'll be given instructions or any other kind of vote. If you wish to make an amendment to any motion tonight, you must do so in writing and present it to the moderator and the town clerk. Please prepare your amendment in writing, bring it up to us here. If you are moving an article that has not been recommended by or moved by the Finance Committee, you must also present that motion to the town clerk in writing, and it must be in the proper form. I remind you all that no motion to reconsider any article will be accepted by the moderator until at least three articles following that article have been acted upon. If the article is one of the last three on the warrant, then I'll accept the motion to reconsider at any time. Please be aware that any article you act upon tonight can be reconsidered as few as three articles later. So keep that in mind before you say, "Okay, we finished the article that I'm interested in, now I'm gonna go home." I tell you this, that it has happened before. People stay, they're in favor of Article Nion, and Article Nion, they argue for it, it passes, they're all happy. They get up, they go home to watch reruns of Seinfeld or whatever they're going to watch that night, and then they get up in the morning and they read, and the article that passed after they left was reconsidered, and the article now failed. And they get all mad, and they have no one to blame but themselves for leaving early and allowing that to happen. So you've been warned that that can happen. It may be requested this evening to allow non-voters to speak on certain articles. That must be done by a vote of the meeting, so if we have that situation, we will do that. Having gone through those things, now it'll turn to the town clerk. Adam Clerk, we have a return of warrant for this meeting.
Norton, Massachusetts. Mr. Moderator, I have served this warrant by posting attested copies at Chatley Post Office, Norton Post Office, Norton Municipal Center, Norton Public Library, and three other public places within the limits of said town, fourteen days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Attest: Michael J. Mayer, Constable in Norton, date May 19, 2022.
Thank you. We'll now move to the warrant. Article two.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair, the Finance Committee.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to accept and enter into contracts for the expenditure of any funds allotted or to be allotted by the Commonwealth and/or county for the construction, reconstruction, and improvement of town roads, and to see if the town will raise and appropriate and/or appropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of road and other municipal improvements within the town of Norton, which are eligible for reimbursement subject to conditions detailed by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation pursuant to General Law, Chapter 90.
Thank you. Are there any discussion or questions on Article two? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of Article two, please indicate by raising your hands. All those opposed? Article two passes by unanimous vote, as declared by the moderator. Article three.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $31,000 from free cash for tree services, including, but not limited to, the removal of hazardous trees, stump removal, and performance of additional preventative and emergency services townwide, including crane rentals and other incidental and related costs.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on Article three? Seeing no hands? All those in favor of Article three, please indicate by raising your hands. All those opposed? Article three passes by unanimous vote, as declared by the moderator. Article four.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the total amount of $4,784,583 be appropriated for the operation of the Water Enterprise for fiscal year 2023 from the Water Enterprise receipts, including, but not limited to, user charges, lease revenue, interest, permits, anticipated receipts, and miscellaneous revenue in the amount of $4,293,359, and by transferring from retained earnings, the amount of $491,225, with $4,226,231 of said sum being appropriated hereunder for direct costs of the enterprise, and $558,352 of said sum to be appropriated in the general fund under Article six for indirect costs and allocated to the Water Enterprise Fund for funding, all as printed in the recommendations of the Finance Committee for Article four of the June 7, 2022 annual town meeting warrant.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on Article four? No questions or comments on Article four? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article four, please indicate by raising your hands. All those opposed? Article four passes by unanimous vote, as declared by the moderator. Article five.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the total amount of $2,299,542 be appropriated for the operation of the Sewer Enterprise for fiscal year 2023 from Sewer Enterprise receipts, including, but not limited to, user charges, fees, charges, interest, permits, betterments, and miscellaneous revenues in the amount of $2,199,669, and by transferring from retained earnings, the amount of $18,273, and from the West Main Street Betterment account, the amount of $81,600, with $2,168,673 of said sum being appropriated hereunder for direct costs of the enterprise, and $130,869 of said sum to be appropriated in the general fund under Article six for indirect costs and allocated to the Sewer Enterprise Fund for funding, all as printed in the recommendation of the Finance Committee for Article five of the June 7, 2022 annual town meeting warrant.
Thank you. Any questions, any comments on Article five? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article five, please indicate by raising your hands. All those opposed? Article five passes by unanimous vote, as declared by the moderator. Article six.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the amount of $62,824,764, raised from water receipts, the amount of $558,352, raised from sewer receipts, the amount of $138,69, all as presented in the Finance Committee's recommendation as printed in Article six of the June 7, 2022 annual town meeting warrant, and further, the amount of $1,659, I'm sorry, $659,972 to be transferred from the following funds for a total appropriation for the fiscal year 2023 operating budget of $65,173,957. From the Hicks Fund, $200,000. From ambulance receipts, $700,000. From septic betterments, $35,000. From the dog fund, $10,000. From the debt exclusion premium, $11,972. From the wetlands protection, $3,000. And from free cash, $700,000, for total transfers of $1,659,972.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments, or debate on Article six? Yes, sir.
Hi. Temple Street, Griffin, 169 John Scott Boulevard. I'm not an accountant, but it looks like about a $2 million increase compared to this previous year. Somebody could just give a quick summary of around the increase. I know everything's more expensive now, if that's the short answer, but just some kind of clarity.
Mr. Town Manager, would you like to handle that one?
So the budget's increased 2%. The debt that we're taking on, we had an increase in that. Our health insurance only went up 1%. So some of the major items, unfortunately, it was a tight year, so budgets, we had to be very conservative.
Okay, the time is now 7:15, and I'm going to recess the town meeting until the completion of the special, and then we'll pick up right where we left off when the special is completed. So I declare the annual town meeting to be in recess until completion of the special town meeting. It's not official until you go. So we'll now go to the special town meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have a return of warrant on the special town meeting?
Norton, Massachusetts. Mr. Moderator, I have served this warrant by posting attested copies at Chatley Post Office, Norton Post Office, Norton Municipal Center, Norton Public Library, and three other public places within the limits of said town, fourteen days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Attest: Michael J. Mayer, Constable in Norton, date May 19, 2022.
Thank you. We will now go to the warrant for the special. Article one.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of $2,347.92 from free cash to pay the following unpaid bills incurred in a prior fiscal year. From account 001-175-570, Planning Department, to the Sun Chronicle, the amount of $1,527.60. From account 001-177-570, Zoning Department, to the Sun Chronicle, the amount of $820.32.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, in one of the great mysteries of life, Massachusetts requires that for an article that seeks to pay bills incurred in a prior fiscal year at a special town meeting on a Tuesday, I threw in the Tuesday part, requires a nine-tenths majority vote. Since my math skills are not good and better than my eyesight in that regard, I will try to ascertain a nine-tenths vote if it is unanimous. If it is not unanimous, we will take a standing count on the vote, so just so you understand why that happens in case it does. Is there any discussion or debate or questions on Article one? Okay, if I don't see, by the way, if somebody goes up to the microphone, I don't see you, wave a little bit so that I make sure I see you. All right, seeing no hands? All those in favor of Article one, please indicate by raising your hands. All those opposed? Article one passes by unanimous vote, as declared by the moderator. Article two.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of $262,094 from free cash to pay all outstanding separation expenses associated with various employees from the town of Norton, and to authorize the town accountant in consultation with the town manager to allocate amounts to the appropriate departments as follows. Account 001-220-510, Fire Department, amount $245,771. Account 001-610-570, Library, the amount of $16,323, for a total of $262,094.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments, or debate on Article two? Okay. All those in favor of Article two, please indicate by raising your hands. All those opposed? Article two passes unanimously, as determined by the moderator. Article three.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to amend the vote taken under Article six of the May 8, 2021 annual town meeting by increasing appropriations for certain line items, and to do so by transferring the additional amount of $403,079 from free cash as follows. To Department 001-300, Norton Public Schools, the amount of $222,469. Account 001-308-560, Bristol County Agricultural School, the amount of $3,600. To account 001-423-570, Snow Removal, the amount of $137,010. And to account 001-940-540, Miscellaneous, the amount of $40,000, for a total operating budget supplement of $403,079.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or debate on Article three? Seeing no hands? All those in favor of Article three, please indicate by raising your hands. All those opposed? Article three passes by majority vote, as declared by the moderator. Article four. Article four. Article four is declared lost for lack of emotion by the moderator. Article five. Article five. Article five is declared lost for lack of emotion by the moderator. Article six. Article six. Article six is declared lost for lack of emotion by the moderator. Article seven. Article seven. Article seven is declared lost for lack of emotion by the moderator. Article eight.
Mr. Moderator.
Oh, yes.
I wasn't napping over here, you know. I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to grant and convey any or all of its right, title, and interests in a parcel of land with any buildings thereon located at 16 Ridge Road, identified on Assessor's Map as Parcel, I'm sorry, identified on Assessor's Map 10 as Parcel 180, containing 5,000 square feet, more or less, on such terms and conditions as the Select Board deems appropriate, and to enter into such agreements and execute such instruments as may be necessary or convenient to effectuate the foregoing transaction.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, just please be aware that because this involves the transfer of property and buildings, this motion in order to pass would require a two-thirds majority vote. Is there any discussion on Article eight?
Yeah?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Cheryl Ann Senior, 169 Reservoir Street. I'm just curious as to what the reason for the article is.
Mr. Town Manager.
This came about, the property is in disrepair, and the home on the property needs to be torn down. When I found this out, at the same time, we were contacted by Habitat for Humanity, who's looking to build a home for a single mother with one child, and they're willing to take on the demo and build the house on that property. And if they do so, there'll be a restriction put on the deed that it will always remain affordable, so it can count towards our FODB count.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions on Article eight? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article eight, please indicate by raising your hands. All those opposed? Article eight passes by unanimous vote, as declared by the moderator. Article nine.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article nine.
Are you moving it, Renee, are you moving it as it's printed?
No, I would like to make an amendment.
Okay, we'll be glad to consider that, then.
Do you want me to provide the amendment first?
Yeah, if you could read it and then bring it up to us, that would be great.
Sure. Do you want me to read the entire article or just the section that will be amended?
How long is it?
It's three paragraphs.
Counsel, do you think we should? Okay. The advice of learned counsel, I would suggest that we have you say you're moving the article as written on the warrant with the following changes.
Okay.
And then, so if you could do that, and somebody seconded that, that would be a wonderful thing.
Okay. I'd like to move the article as written with the following changes. Under Section 1, last sentence, that currently reads, "The Select Board shall appoint the town manager to serve for a term of up to three years," should be changed to, "The Select Board shall appoint the town manager to serve for a term of years to be determined by the Select Board." The remaining language in this sentence stays.
And is there a second? Yes, I see a second in the back there. Okay. So we have an article that's moved and seconded. It is as printed in the warrant with that change, and could you give us that in writing? Do you have that in writing?
Yes, I do have that in writing.
Okay, could I, could we have it up here? If you don't mind, please.
Can I take an opportunity to provide information for the attendees?
Sure, as long as we have it before you, you know, before you go walk away, yes.
Sure. Just a quick background on this. What this article does is it aligns the language in the charter to the contract language for the town manager's contract. So currently, what this change will do is, for the contract term itself, the charter would not supersede the contract term. Essentially, what the charter will continue to do is provide assurances that the town manager's position, if it were to be removed at any term or any reason outside of the contract term, it would require a supermajority vote of its members. What this does is it allows for the contract term, whatever the board would decide that term would be, to allow for essentially the removal at the end of the contract term. So it separates out a term for cause versus a term based on the contract, and again, it just aligns it. One of the reasons why this is an important change, I'll just give you an example that was provided during sessions with town council. In the city of Stoughton, they had similar language in their charter as well as in the contract for the town manager. The board decided not to renew the town manager's contract. They did not or were not aware of the charter language, so the town manager came in after the contract had ended to continue to work because he was able to do so through the charter. So not only does it reduce the amount for a very uncomfortable situation, but it also reduces the risk that the town essentially could pay two town managers at the same time because the language right now is not aligned. But it does keep in place any removal outside of a contract term, requires a four-member vote.
Okay, if you could give us that amendment in writing? Before we have debate on, let me just read this so that we're clear. It's as printed in your warrant except under Section 1, where it says, in the 1, 2, 3, 4th line, it says, "The Select Board shall appoint the town manager to serve for a term of," and then we would strike out "up to three years" and replace it with the words, "years to be determined by the Select Board." And that is the change. It's a change in the warrant, but it's not an amendment, it's actually the main motion, so we don't have to vote it in amendment, we'll just do that. And Counsel, this is a charter amendment, so does this require a two-thirds, or is it just a majority?
Special Act.
A special act of the legislature. Okay, so this would, this is asking for a special act of the legislature, so this would just require a majority vote. And please, anybody who doesn't have their phone silenced, because it's usually me, please make sure you silence your phones. Thank you. Mr. Kimball.
Robert Kimball, 51 Pine Street. I'm rather confused about the reason for the change. If the board of selectmen has the ability, or the Select Board has the ability, to change or renew a contract every three years, why are we making it an undetermined amount of time, number one? time, number one? This charter, when we adopted it way back in the eighties, late eighties, spent a lot of time on this issue. And I'm not sure why, at this point in the game, we have to go for a legislative, we have to go to a town meeting first, legislative act to change a couple of words in the charter. I think we have other more important things to be worried about. My opinion is, if you allow a Select Board to appoint a Town Manager for an undetermined amount of time, what's going to happen is people qualified, good qualified Town Managers will not apply for the job. Wouldn't make sense. One year into it, two years into it, I don't renew your contract, you're done. So that doesn't sit well with me as a prior member of the Stoughton Board of Selectmen. But my main concern is, we're going to go through all this effort and all this time, and by the way, the applicant is the one who actually moved the article. Having heard from Finance Committee, the Board of Select Board, I'd like to hear their opinion as to why they did not support this article. But I think it's far more important for all of us to take a look at this. This is such a minor change. Now, I will admit that I spoke against the last charter change. Ninety-five percent of that charter made a lot of sense to me, one portion did not. This wasn't brought up in the last charter change that we discussed, this was never discussed. There were other issues that were discussed that I believe that a Charter Committee could take a look at and readdress these articles again today. So I would like to hear from someone from the Select Board and from the Finance Committee as to why they did not support this article. And I would encourage all of you not to support this article to begin with. Thank you.
Okay, before I go back to the maker of the motion, can we hear from the Finance Committee? Madam Finance Committee Chairman, can you tell us what the Finance Committee's opinion on this was? The Finance Committee did not vote to recommend this, is that correct?
We did not recommend this as it was originally written, but we did have a discussion regarding the concern of, at the end of a Town Manager's contract, when a contractual term is over, if there is no mechanism for the Town Manager to depart, that the contract expires, but the charter allows him to indefinitely stay, then there's a disconnect in the way that we're managing this process. Because if the contract ends, does that mean we no longer have to pay him or her? If he or she continues showing up for work, are we required to compensate the person that arrives every day? I mean, in that Stoughton example that Renee provided, they hired someone new, they did an executive search and hired a new Town Manager, and the current Town Manager and the new Town Manager both arrived to work. So then, like, this is something that clearly is ambiguous, and there is a discrepancy between what can be put in a contract and what the charter allows. So I think that, I know that it's changing one sentence, but this appears to clean up that ambiguity.
Okay, so officially, the Finance Committee has not considered the article as moved, it considered the article before it was amended.
Correct.
Okay, so the Finance Committee has no recommendation on this.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tool.
Mr. Town Moderator through the chair. The Select Board voted on it at the time, the way it was written, as a two-two vote. We had one, someone missing. And I think the sticking point for us was really was in the first part, which talked about limiting the three-years part of the contract. We felt that that could be handled, the limiting or the term of the contract could be handled, well, at least the opposition side, I should say, could be handled through contract, that we felt like it shouldn't be put into the charter, or, so the bylaws, I apologize. And the, but the, with that being said, the previous Select Board did find themselves in a sticky wicket, if you will, and maybe Town Council can answer this, is, right now, the way the charter is actually written is, if the Town Manager's contract is not adopted, or does, has not have a contract, without a supermajority, we're kind of in this no-man's land. So we, I think this, with the changes that were made by Mr. Delly, I, you know, for myself, I don't speak for the entire Select Board, I think that answers a lot of the concerns we have. It's nothing that I would be overly passionate about, but I think we are, find ourselves, especially with the contract, if we don't have a supermajority, we need a supermajority to remove the Town Manager. But that's the biggest problem with, if we don't have a supermajority and we can't agree on a contract, it's kind of in this no-man's land.
Thank you.
And can I ask, can I ask Town Council, like, what would happen, I guess, if the, we did not agree on a contract and it did expire, and we did not have a supermajority to rule? And I would ask everyone to just, don't look at this individual, we're looking at this as a wider thing, it's not an individual thing, this is a wider, wider concern, I think that's an important fact to hear, so.
And I know you couldn't hear Town Council, but I think she, if I can, dear, to summarize your words, I think she said that's kind of a speculative situation, and she wouldn't care to speculate on that without knowing the specifics of it. There any, oh, yes, Mr. Delly, do you want to, do you want to respond to anything that was said there, or?
I did, I just wanted to clarify what Mr. Kimball said about the undetermined amount of time. I think Mr. Tool alluded to it in the charter, or in the charter, right now it does say an indefinite term. So the language was to change the indefinite term to three years, but as Mr. Tool indicated, with the new board who is seated, they weren't comfortable with the three years, which is why I proposed the alternate language for a term of years to be determined by the Select Board.
Okay. Yes, the gentleman in the red jacket there?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, William Francis, sixty-six Plain Street. This seems to be rather confusing, this seems to be a conflict. What exactly does the contract entail, and what exactly does the charter set? A contract has a beginning and an end. If the Town Manager's contract comes to an end, then it comes to an end, that's it. I need some more clarification, either that or we can recommend to table this article until we can find out some more information. Thank you.
You weren't making a motion, you were just saying that if you don't get an answer, then that's a consideration, is that, I just want to make sure I understood you.
Well, I, this is rather confusing. As Mr. Kimball said, it's, it's, it doesn't make a lot of sense, we're talking about a contract in a charter. I'd like to try to get some clarification on the meaning of both. If I want to make a motion, I would say to table it at this time, so that we can discuss it further or get more information on this conflict, because there certainly seems to be a conflict.
Okay, I'm going to assume that you asked the question, so I'm going to try to get the answer to your question, so that you can then determine if you want to make any other action. Is that, is that a fair representation of what you said?
I'd be glad to certainly hear some sort of clarification, some sort of remarks.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Counsel.
Mr. Moderator, three, Lauren Goldberg, KP Law Town Council. The short answer is that while that would seem to be unrelated, an appointment is different than a contract in this context. An appointment is made, it's a formal action that's taken, appointed for an undetermined, for an un, I forget the word, is unspecific term, or, that means that person is appointed, a contract says, we're going to pay you X, Y, and Z dollars, and give you X, Y, and Z benefits for the period of the contract. So they could be conflicting, but they don't have to be.
I think, you know, what, again, what Counsel points out is that the appointment is how the person gets the job, and then the contract is what governs the term, the conditions of the employment of that person, and that's why they are two separate things. Yes?
I believe that gentleman was first.
Oh, okay, I wasn't sure, I was trying to go side to side, but I'll be glad to take that gentleman first.
Cody Thompson, thirty Keith Drive. I think the, as I understand it, the reasoning behind the recommended amendment to the article, as Ms. Delly had presented, is to align the charter with the contract as determined by the Select Board. The Select Board determines that the amount of time that the, that the Town Manager is appointed, and without the charter aligning with the contract, the contract could expire. But under the charter, that Town Manager could remain as an appointed employee of the town and continue to receive a salary, even though a new contract with a new Town Manager has also been arranged. And that, while this may not have come up under the former Charter Commission recommendations, this was something that came to light afterwards and needed to be addressed so that the charter aligns. And while it may not have come up during the Charter Commission, that doesn't mean that the Charter Commission knew about this and just failed to address it. This was something that was overlooked, the Stoughton situation brought this to light, and that's the purpose of the article, is to align the charter with the intent, which is the contract of the Town Manager aligns with the, with the appointment. Does that make sense?
Don't ask me. Mr. Tillis.
Zach Tillis, three Richmond Drive, also a member of the Finance Committee. The way it was described to us, that this article would not affect the current Town Manager's position. So with that being said, it was going to go back to the Select Board, the Select Board would take this up again, vote it, it would go back to the Finance Committee, the Finance Committee would vote it and bring it up at a fall town meeting or related town meeting. Seeing there is no urgency to do anything with this, seeing the current Town Manager is ineffective, there's a year left, I believe, a year and a half left on his contract. So I would like to see this go back to the Select Board for a future town, for a vote, brought back to the Finance Committee and tabled to the fall town meeting.
Okay, yes, the lady in the back.
One six nine Reservoir Street. So I would think that the contract would, would adhere to the charter, as opposed to the charter adhering to the contract. So maybe I misunderstood what I heard, or maybe I'm just not that well-versed in these things, but it seems to me the charter would govern what's in the contract and not the other way around.
I, you know, attempting to answer the question is dangerous for the moderator, but I will tell you that.
That's a concern that I have.
Yeah, the, the charter does not address specific contracts of any town employees. That would be beyond the scope of the charter in terms of, you know, regular work conditions. The charter more regulates appointment, but not the working conditions, or salary, or vacation, or, you know, like, I mean, that's the general answer, I think. And if that's incorrect, anybody is welcome to point that out. Is that basically it, Counsel?
There's also statute that means the Board of the Select Board would be the contractor in that contract, that kind of a contract, many of that, water.
Nice that we can hear you. Okay, Counsel was pointing out that there is a statute, a law that enables the Select Board to enter into a contract of that type with a Town Manager, and that is where the authority and the power from that comes through, not so much through the, through the charter.
Thank you.
So that's, that's the basic difference. Yes, sir?
Kevin Schleicher, West Oxford Street. I was on the Charter Commission, I just have one question, if Ms. Goldberg could answer for us. In the almost two years that we spent discussing this, I know you attended a ton of our meetings, this never came up, because I don't think it was anything that we ever saw in any other charter or any other issues. In all your experience, have you ever seen, besides a Stoughton thing, something like this coming up?
Counsel, please.
No.
Okay. And the second, which, I'm sorry, I'm sorry that was rhetorical, but I needed you to say that. And then, the second thing, and this is all you do, correct, pretty much, for KP Law? Yes? Okay, so.
Embarrassingly.
Yeah.
Yes, this is what we do.
So, and then the second thing would be is, could, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't know the answer to this one, couldn't simply the contract that was worked out for the Town Manager by the Selectmen have wording in there to cover what happens at the end of the three, three years, or two years, or whatever it was? So for instance, when the three years is up, you shall, see you later.
That can, that kind of language in a more polite way can be included in a contract.
I know it's not polite what I'm saying, but that could be simply done. So if, now I'll go on to my comments on this, because I, we lived this for two years. The reason this didn't come up is because you can cover this simply without going into it, that's why we didn't waste any time on it. What I see this is, and now this is just me personal, this is not from the charter, is this is, this is just an attack, it's a personal vendetta on the Town Manager now. That's how I see it, that's how I will see it, and this is absolutely, should not even be discussed right now.
Okay, I'll go with the gentleman in the back who hasn't spoken yet.
How you doing? Adam Brodsky, fifteen Willis Drive. I definitely agree that, you know, change in the language to allow the charter and the Select Board contract to align more closely is probably a good thing, and it definitely needs to be addressed. The only thing I have a problem with is, you can't have it open-ended. You can't say a term to be selected by the Select Board. This is a small town, you can stack the Select Board, and we're going to give the Town Manager a twenty-year contract? You have to have limits. You can have a minimum, you can have a maximum, but it can't be open-ended. You cannot allow the Select Board to enter into a twenty-year contract. So to me, you just have to have defined terms, whether you want to have a minimum, maximum, but you can't just have it open-ended. That's just not good business practice.
I think Town Counsel can maybe shed some light on that aspect of it.
Mr. Moderator, through you, there's two comments here. One is, an appointment of up to five years is really the limit from a public policy point of view, and the question of whether the General Court would approve this in an, you know, within indefinite term, excuse me, is really not, we don't know. So it could be that they ask for a term to be put in. I want to clarify, though, that contract, I mean, charters appear in the format that's being proposed, and for indefinite term, there's no one right way, there's no one circumstance. These are all, hopefully, all these charters are unique to the town. So even if in another town it might be handled differently, or, you know, something could happen, it doesn't mean that it would happen like that. So I just, I think everybody needs to know, there's not, there's not a right way, this isn't a wrong way. The way the charter is now isn't a wrong way.
Thank you. The gentleman in the back there?
Steve Washall, thirty Wampum Road. If the charter states that the maximum's five years, why not just change that from three to five years? Shouldn't it align that way? Would that not cover the maximum amount of a new contract or a new charter? Like appointment?
I don't know if anyone wants to guess.
Mr. Moderator, the charter currently reads an indefinite term, which is why the three years was put in here based on what the former Select Board wanted. And then, again, the modification was based on the Select Board that's seated, that they didn't feel like three years was the, three years should be in there, it should be a determination by the Board based on the contract. So, you know, I'd like to add to this, too, from everybody being confused, as a Select Board member at the time, we were incredibly confused on this, and I appreciate Mr. Schleicher's opinion on this, we literally, before we went into a meeting, I received a call from KP Law, who advised about this particular information. So from, from a perspective, and I can say this because the, the meeting minutes are now public, from a perspective of this being a direct attack on the current Town Manager, that is not the case. If you read the minutes, you will see that we actually did have enough votes if we wanted to remove him from office, we did not. We extended the contract, and the contract is through the end of this year, for the current Select Board to renew at some point this month. So again, this was based on a very confusing situation that we weren't aware of, and so going into a meeting to talk about the contract renewal and what we had to do based on the charter and the contract itself. I do agree with, with Lauren, in that you can't put language within the contract, there is language in there now, based on more, a removal for cause. I don't know, Lauren, how that would play out if the charter right now reads, it's for an indefinite term. You know, again, this is, this was to change the indefinite term so that there was a term limit on there. The term limit was changed based on feedback. The term limit was changed based on feedback from the Board when this was reviewed. But it is a very confusing situation, and honestly, it's just to align the two so that there is no confusion in the future with any other Board or town manager.
Thank you. Mr. Select Board Member.
While I agree with the changes, I think we, there's a little bit of confusion on the second portion, so I want to move to table this.
I would certainly ask, a motion to table, and to debate, a motion to table must be to a specific time and place. I would, if it appears, and this is just a suggestion on my part, but if it appears that debate may be drawing to a close, it might be better to take a chance and let the vote go, but that's up to you. You presented a perfectly acceptable motion, and I would be glad to do it, but you must adjourn to a time and place, or there are other motions to lay on the table, and I'd have to talk to Lauren because we haven't done this in a very long time. But, yes.
I'll move to amend my motion to have the main motion that we pass over this article.
Okay, so there's a motion to pass over?
Yeah.
Okay. Before I ask for a second, I'll explain a motion to pass over. You get one meeting as moderator, you get a motion to pass over. It's amazing. A motion to pass over is essentially a motion to table, but unlike a motion to table, it doesn't have to be to a specific time and place. A motion to table, a motion to pass over is to basically skip it and let somebody else worry about it later on. That's basically what a motion to pass over is. So is there a second to the motion to pass over?
There's a second.
Okay, is there a second? Lauren, without me going to town meeting time, is a motion to pass over debatable? Do you? It is, okay. Just want to make sure. Yes, go ahead.
My reasoning is that I don't want it to fail and then not be able to come back in fall town meetings.
Okay, we now have a motion to pass over Article 9. All discussion now on, must be limited to the motion to pass over. So we're not discussing Article 9 per se, we're discussing whether or not to pass over Article 9. And this has all been so non-confusing. So far, I'm sure that has cleared everything up for everybody. Yes, yeah.
Again, Charles Senior, 169 Reservoir. So, because I just want to know is if this is approved to be passed, could it be brought back up for consideration later in the evening?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion on the motion to pass over? Got to tell you, I was moderator for 12 years, I never had a motion to pass over. It's kind of exciting for-
[laughter]
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to pass over Article 9, please indicate by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article 9, the motion to pass over Article 9 passes by majority vote as declared by the moderator. Article 10?
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to confirm that vote taken under Article 7 of the May 14, 2018 Annual Town Meeting to appropriate $8,476,971 for the Norton Elementary School's Window Door Project in conjunction with the Massachusetts School Building Authority Elementary School Project was added to the $200,000 appropriated under Article 19 at the October 23, 2017 Town Meeting for schematic design for the elementary school project for a total project cost of $8,676,971. Mr. Moderator?
Madam Chair.
May I explain this article for those in attendance?
I wish you would.
Thank you. We have already approved all of these funds in 2018 and in 2017, but the MSBA, who's going to pay for a big part of this project, won't approve their portion of it unless it's all in one article. So this is basically a clerical cleanup to bring it all together so that they will give us half the money of this $8 million.
So just to be clear, does that mean that this article does not seek to spend any additional money?
That is correct.
Is there any question? And by the way, Article 10, I assume because it probably means bonding, does require a two-thirds majority vote to pass? That says two-thirds on my sheet.
It says two-thirds.
Can't possibly be wrong, can it?
That would be my fault if it is.
Oh, well, okay, I believe it or not.
Two-thirds.
Okay, so it's just a majority vote? So never mind, it's just a majority vote, we're going to pass over the two-thirds. So Article 10 just needs a majority vote. Seeing no hands for further discussion, all those in favor of Article 10, please indicate by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article 10 passes by unanimous vote as declared by the moderator. And that completes the special town meeting. So I hereby declare the special town meeting to be adjourned. We will now, I hereby declare the annual town meeting to be back in session. And we were on Article 6, and Mr. Freeman was at the mic, and I will recognize Mr. Freeman to speak to Article 6.
John Freeman, 19 Freeman Street. I'd just like to ask if there's any rule of law or anything that would require the following pages to be read in detail. And if there isn't any statutory or other requirement, I'd like to suggest that we dispense with all the numbers and details and have the moderator call out each section by number and ask if there's any discussion on it. I think we can all read this and understand pretty much what it is without all the code numbers and everything. It just gets very tedious. And so, can we do it that way?
Yeah, we've kind of actually been doing it that way for a lot of years now. What I, at least what I plan to do is just asking, taking the first page and saying, is there any question anybody has on any line item on the first page?
Okay.
And then we go to the second page.
That's probably even better.
Yep.
Okay. Let's do it.
Okay, no problem. Yes, Town Council?
I just want to confirm that the motion itself refers to the charts that we're talking about, so the motion as written is sufficient.
Yes, yeah, there's no, the motion definitely is sufficient, but I will go page by page and ask if there's any question on any line item on the first page. That's how we'll do the debaters. Because, believe it or not, as Mr. Freeman points out, years ago, we used to read every single line and read the account number and read all that. We haven't done that in quite a while, and we won't be doing that again for a very long time. So, we have a motion on Article 6. I would ask, as you see, the first page that begins with Select Board 122 and ends with Treasurer Collector 147. Is there any discussion or questions on that page? I can't see what's up there, so if I'm not on the right page. No questions or?
[inaudible]
Yeah.
[inaudible]
Yeah, as Town Council points out, the amount on all of that stuff that's being actually moved is the amount in the far right-hand column. That's the amount that the Finance Committee is recommending, and that that's part of their main motion. So that far-right-hand column would be the amount that would actually be appropriated if you would approve the article as it appears in the word. Any questions on that first page that ends in Treasurer Collector 147? Okay, then we will go to the next page that starts with Legal Services 151 and ends with Planning Board 175. Any comments, questions, or debate on any of those items? Okay, then the next one, that is, I believe, starts with Southeast and Regional Planning, 176, and ends with Fire Department 220. Any questions on that page, any of those line items? Okay. The next page starts with Emergency Medical Services 230 and ends in Tree Warden 294. Any questions, comments, debate? Okay. Next page begins with School Budget, School Department 300, and ends in Sanitary Landfill 438. That is not a comment about starting with a school budget and ending with sanitary landfill. Just want to make that clear. Any comments, questions, debate on anything on that page? Okay, then we'll go to the next one that begins with Board of Health 510 and ends in Recreation 630. Anyone have any questions, comments, considerations? Mr. Campbell?
Question about the veterans' benefits. The request was for $230,000. The town manager recommended 220, Finance Committee 220. With all the veterans we have coming back and the problems that are involved with all of them, I'm wondering why? And I know this Veterans Benefit, by the way, is a matching fund. The state does match a lot of this money. Why the $10,000 is not considered? Maybe someone could tell us that?
Mr. Town Manager.
This is an obligation that we have as a town, and if there, we never know who's going to come forward, who's going to need services. It's always something that's undefined. Something like legal services, we'd never know when we're going to need more money. If the situation arose that we did need more money, obviously, it's something that we would have to fund, but in the previous years, you can see in FY '20, we spent $203,000, and FY '21, we only spent $173,000. So with the 220, it should hopefully be enough to get us through the year, but if not, if we had to make any adjustments in October, if we knew enough by then, or if not, make adjustments at a special next May. But the 220 should be enough, I would think, to get us through hopefully this year.
Thank you. Any other questions on the page that ends with Recreation 630? Okay, and then the final page would be the one that starts with Memorial and Vet's Day 692 and ends with Miscellaneous 940. Any questions or comments on that? Mr. Freeman?
Yeah, John Freeman, 19 Freeman Street. The last line is grand totals. I'd like to talk about that.
Okay.
Okay. So with $65 million, which is a lot of money, I'm sure everyone's noticing some strain on their own budgets. I hate to bring this up, seems like it's kind of beaten on a dead horse. Every day you hear on the radio that inflation's at a 9%. But that doesn't include food and fuel, so it's probably closer to twice eight or nine We all need food and fuel. It's about, it's the only major things that we can't live without. So I'd like to, I'd like to move to amend the total of $65,173,957 to $61,915,259.15.
Could you just repeat that one more time, please? The number, are you?
Yeah, well, yeah, the number will go from $65,173,957 to $61,915,259.15, and that's a 5% reduction. I think if the people in this town are living on an 8 of 16, whatever you want to call it, inflation rate, that the town, the people that work for the town, the things that the town does can stand a 5% reduction. I'm sure we can find 5% worth of fat, as they say, in this budget. It may not be very significant in real dollars, out of 60-plus million, but I think it would show a good, good attitude on the part of the people that the taxpayers pay and the services are provided. I think we can find 5%. We'd be, I think the town, as an organization, can find the 5%, because our government is asking us to find 8 of 16% just to live our lives the way we've been living them recently. So I'd like to make that motion, and I have it in writing here.
Thank you. Just one second. I don't know if I have a second.
I'm not sure who has the floor right now, but I'd like to ask for a second if that's in order.
I'll ask for a second.
Okay.
I just want to clarify, I'm just clarifying procedure here. Okay. Yeah.
Okay, first of all, I'll ask if there's a second to the motion. Is there a second to Mr. Freeman's motion? Seeing no second, the motion is not proper. Any other discussion on Article 6?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I guess this shows I don't have any friends, or at least I don't have any friends with any guts. Thank you.
I'm just going to let that sit, Mr. Freeman. Any other questions on Article 6? Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the vote on Article 6. All those in favor of Article 6, please indicate by raising your hands. All those opposed? Article 6 is passed by majority vote as declared by the moderator. Article 7? Article 7 is declared lost for lack of motion by the moderator. Article 7 is declared lost for lack of motion by the moderator. Article 8.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town appropriate the total sum of $1,449,341 for the purchase or lease for periods of time up to or in excess of three years with an option to purchase and equip the new and/or replacement capital items or for all capital projects for various town departments and the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto for the purposes and in the amount set forth in the Finance Committee's recommendations and in the chart entitled Article 8, Proposed Fiscal Year '23 Capital Budget. And to meet said appropriation, to transfer the amount of $546,141 from the capital improvements account, $250,000 from the Water Enterprise retained earnings, $590,000 from Sewer Enterprise retained earnings, $63,200 from the Ambulance Reserve Fund as follows. All right, I guess I'm reading this chart. For Conservation, Department 171, $11,500 for Camp Edith Reed Hazard Lodge renovations. For the Police Department, $112,000 for two, I'm sorry, three police line cruiser replacements. For Department 220, the Fire Department, $65,000 to replace a staff car, $19,000 for a structural firefighting hose, $14,000 for turnout gear replacement, and $140,250 for a pumper replacement year 5 of 5. For Department 300, Norton Public Schools, district wide, $44,983 for mini buses. For Department 420, Highway, $50,758 for a 2022 Bobcat L-28 small articulated loader, $36,000 for a Peterbilt with tank, $28,150 for a Peterbilt dump truck year 2 of 5, and $34,300 for a Diamond Boom mower year 3 of 4. For the Tree Department, $53,400 for a bucket truck year 4 of 5 with a total of, I'm sorry, a subtotal of $609,341. For Department 440, the Sewer Department, $90,000 for a medium-duty dump truck and $500,000 for a Cobb Street Sewer Station Phase III. Subtotal for sewer projects, $590,000. For Department 450, the Water Department, $65,000 for a 4x4 pickup with utility body and $185,000 for the Cottage Street Elevated Water Tank Replacement Phase I Evaluation and Design for a subtotal for water projects of $250,000.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this involves leases and federal funds. This, in order to pass Article 8, would require a two-thirds majority vote. Mr. Griffin.
Tim Griffin, 169 John Scott Boulevard. I just have a question regarding the vertical page and then the horizontal page next to it. It looks like there's some items under the school which are on the horizontal page, but not the vertical page. So I'm not sure if I'm reading it wrong or if things are just not carrying over the right way.
Oh, so on the horizontal page, it's everything the departments have asked for? And on the vertical page, it's everything that was approved and recommended?
But it's only the amounts that were read that are part of the motion that would be involved. Anything that's not in that, that was not read, would not be involved in the motion.
Right. So just like on the budget sheet, everything that was recommended is in the far right-hand column? And those are the same items that should appear on the vertical sheet?
Any other questions or comments or debate on Article 8? Just have to wait to make sure the person isn't walking to the microphone. Seeing no hints, all those in favor of Article 8, please indicate by raising your hands. All those opposed. Article 8 passes by unanimous vote, as declared by the moderator. Article 9. Yes, sir.
Not exactly sure the official way to do this, but I'd like to make a move, move to pass this.
You'd like to move Article 9?
Yes.
There's questions to move on.
Yeah, I'd like the construction to actually happen on the sewer line.
So the problem is that Article 9, as printed in the warrant, does not contain the details and the sum of money and the source and all of those very important things. In order for you to move it, you would have to include those details in the, in the motion. If you don't have those details, then I can't accept the motion because the article as it appears here is meaningless until you plug in all of those details.
That's fair enough. Is there anybody on the school committee that can speak to that? Because I believe they've spoken and said about $800,000 to do it. If there's somebody that can give that information.
I think school superintendent will come up and talk about it. But it's, it's, it's not just the amount. You would need sources and language and things that are very important to, you know, there are some articles that you can just say, "I move," as written in the warrant. This is not one of them, most likely. But I'll let Dr. Byetta address that. We don't have a motion on the floor, but I'm going to let Dr. Byetta speak to the possibility of moving the article. Dr. Byetta?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe Byetta, Superintendent of Schools. There is a plan that does not utilize this article in order to take care of the sewer connection. I believe that will be discussed, is it later on, between the Select Board, the Finance Committee, using federal assistance money and the current remaining funds that may be left over in the project for the athletic complex. Therefore, there wouldn't be, at this time, a request for an article for any funding.
Thank you. Ken, I'll crawl Article 9. Anyone wish to move Article 9? Seeing no one, moderator declares Article 9 lost for lack of motion. Article 10.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court for two additional all-alcoholic beverages to be consumed off premises liquor licenses, with one license to be exercised within an area located on East Main Street between its intersection with Interstate 495 and the Town of Eastern Line, and one license to be exercised within an area located on Old Colony Road between its intersection with North and South Worcester Streets and the Attleboro City Line within the town. Said licenses not to be transferred to any other section of town, nor shall the licensing authority authorize the transfer of such license within one year after the date of issuance, and authorizing the Select Board to establish a liquor license review committee and a competitive procedure for allocating liquor licenses that are now available or that may become available in the future, provided, however, that the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the Select Board approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court, which are within the scope of the general public objectives of the petition.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion or comments on Article 10?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
John Freeman, 19 Freeman Street. I'd like to speak against this bill for various reasons. I'm not sure, but it seems to me the town wants these liquor licenses to get license fees and inventory taxes and new real estate. I could be wrong, but that's, I'm assuming that from what I've seen. It's kind of a sin tax, you know, but we got enough taxes. But anyhow, the way you request them these is, is, is very specific as to location and so on, which I look at as scant. It's not the town's business to make decisions on where a businessman would locate if he wanted to have a liquor establishment. But we'll let that go. Just sitting down and thinking about these two areas. Let's take from 495 to the Eastern Line. And I may have missed some because I don't generally frequent these areas, but I'm, I'm not anti-licker. From 495 to the Eastern Line, we have Quick Stop. Recently, within the last few years, that's had a new owner. There was a restaurant in that building that went out. The owner took over the entire building, I believe. Yeah, he did take over the entire building. And he put a lot of inventory in. And I think that this certainly won't help him. I think there's a pizza place just a little further down. I believe they have a beer and wine license. I could be wrong. Kelly's Restaurant has alcohol in the same building. So that's three liquor license, liquor licenses in town in East Norton, that's the area that's specified in this, this article. Going the other way, I may have missed some here. Chatley Corners, there's two liquor establishments. There's a Sportsman's Cafe that's been there for, since I can remember. And then there's Michelle's Variety Store that recently became a, I think, a full-service liquor store, package store, whatever the official title is. I don't know her. I talked to her once when she took it over. It was Christie's or something before that. She spends a lot of hours working there. She bought the real estate. And I would say her investment is approaching a million dollars. That's just kind of an assumption on my part. If you left Chatley Corner, you get up to the top of the hill. It used to be Bristol Farms, and it's now called the Tavern on the Hill. That's got a liquor license. You go a little further on the right, there's Walton Macs or Mack and Walts. I can't remember which. That's got a liquor license. So there's four, from Chatley Corner to the Attleboro Line. I just, I just don't think it's fair. The people in this state must have confidence in Boston because they keep putting the same people in. And they passed a law that limited liquor licenses based on population. Maybe that's valid, maybe it isn't. But, but that's the law. Not so much now because the liquor license isn't the golden parachute, if you will, what it used to be because of liability, insurance costs, liquor license costs. They're probably in the $2,000 to $3,000 range now, depending on the type. But these people have been running a business. They've invested in their business. I mentioned Michelle's on Chatley Corner. I mentioned Quick Stop in East Norton. And I don't think that it's fair to undermine the local businesses just because we've got a big developer at the former Houghton Farm right over 495 that wants to put a strip mall in and wants to put a liquor store in there, which will probably be, and I'm probably going to date myself, will probably be something like a Blanchett or Cappy's or something that will undercut all the other businesses in town. But it's going to be good for the person that came in and ruined the farm down there. And maybe it's good for the town. But money isn't everything. I would like people to vote this down. I think that's about all I can say.
Thank you. Mr. Kimball.
Just for clarification, there is, we have a number of liquor licenses in town. They all have different abilities. Like some of the locations Mr. Freeman mentioned, you can't take them off premises. Those are, that's a different kind of liquor license. What we're talking about tonight is a all-alcoholic liquor license, which is by law, as Mr. Freeman noted too. It's not a law, we have about 19,000 people. We are allowed to have three all-alcoholic licenses. We have four because the produce bond a number of years ago created, went through, and had a sort of act done that allowed us to have the fourth license. We weren't going to be able to get a fourth license until the town hit a population of 20,000. We're 19. We've been bouncing back and forth. Right now, we're coming back down. But we haven't ever reached that 20,000. At that 20,000, that would have triggered the fourth, in this case, the fifth license that would have been allowed. What they're proposing here is to put two additional liquor licenses to be consumed on our premises, which is different than some of the other ones we have. I don't have a problem with that. I think it's, you know, it's something that would be beneficial to the town. I don't have a problem with it. The problem that I do have a problem with is the Select Board to establish a liquor license review committee and a competitive procedure for allocating liquor licenses that are now available or may become available in the future. I have a real issue with that. The Select Board is the appointing, they're the licensing authority. They're the ones in control of these liquor licenses. No one else should be telling anyone else that, gee, maybe, maybe not, we can get you that license. We don't want to form a committee that goes out there and makes maybe some promises that, oh, yeah, we can get you that liquor license, then have them come before the Select Board. And the Select Board says, you know what? You know, we're not going to give it to you. Then you get in court action, you get into all kinds of issues that we probably shouldn't, shouldn't be involved in. And I believe that doing, doing this review committee will open the town up to all kinds of legal problems that just don't make sense. Folks, we're talking about, presently, we have four. If we have these, there's going to be six. If we can't control six licenses, if the Select Board can't control it, then I don't understand what the big issue is. It shouldn't be a problem. The Select Board is responsible for every single license that's in this town, every liquor license. And creating a review committee, in my opinion, is going to cause a lot of confusion, if nothing else. Mr. Moderator, if I could, I'd like to offer an amendment that deletes a large portion of this article. And if you want me to, I'll read what I would like to weave in, and I won't read what I'd like to take out. I guess that's the best way to do it. My motion is to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court for two additional all-alcoholic beverages to be consumed on premises, liquor licenses, with one license to be exercised within an area located on East Main Street between its intersection with Interstate 495 and the Town of Eastern Line, and one license to be exercised within an area located on Old Colony Road between the intersection with North and South Worcester Street and the Attleboro City Line within the town. Said licenses not to be transferred to any other section of town nor shall the licensing authority authorize the transfer of such license within one year after the date of issuance. That's my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball. So, Ms. Kimball, as you read it, that basically you're just eliminating all the words after, where it says after the date of issuance. You're just stopping it there and eliminating everything else on there. So if you look in your warrant and you, you read down and you read, authorize the transfer of such license within one year... such license within one year after the date of issuance, Mr. Kimball is asking to amend that and put a period there and scratch the rest of it. Is that, that's correct?
No.
No, I didn't think, Mr. Kimball's not doing that.
So I've been advised that I have to keep a certain amount of it in there, so. Would you like me to read it again or just add on to whatever you read?
No, if you can indicate it, I'll read it out and then we can, I just want to make sure what we're doing before I stick my foot in my mouth again here.
Probably the easiest way of me to say what I'd like to take out, because most of it does remain in the article.
Okay, that won't quite make it to say that they're going to vote on taking most of it out. We kind of need to know specifically what's there. I needed in writing to know exactly what you're moving.
So you're going to delete from this end all the way through to?
You're going to point, Mike, you're going to point?
Mr. Kimball, I'm just going to take another speaker while you're doing that, and then I'll come back to you at the conclusion of the speaker. Yes, the gentleman in the back.
Hi, Jim Jordan, 135 North Worcester Street. This article seems similar to one that was, I believe, at the special town meeting last summer to add two more liquor licenses. And something that was discussed then, and I think is worthy of pointing it out now to everybody, is that I believe the total liquor license was nine, and this would make it 11. And in doing that, that would trigger a third marijuana license. And I just wanted everybody to make sure they understand that. And I'm not going to go into big things about anti-marijuana licenses, but with two of them already in town, I really don't see a need to force a third marijuana license in Norton. So that was just my comment.
Thank you. I could tell a few jokes. Ms. Dela, are you at the microphone?
Yeah, but I think Christine was up before me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Select, you sure? I'm sorry, please, next time throw something out there. Yes, Renee, go ahead. She wants to let you go.
Sure. So I can provide background on this and a couple of areas. This has been an item that's been discussed for at least the past four years. It initially did come to the town as a business who wanted to get an additional liquor license. The discussion happened with the board at the time about liquor licenses being, only being required or requested to serve a specific business. A former member of the board had some serious concerns about how the last legislative license was issued, and therefore the discussion led to putting together a review committee. That review committee would be very similar to the Marijuana Retail Subcommittee that was formed as well to ensure that there was a consistent process across all applicants and a fair process for the state as well. And it would, the proposal at the time is it would be comprised of a quorum of the EDC, the town manager, and the town economic planner. In respect to the number of licenses, and Mr. Unitz could speak to this, but when he spoke to the state representatives, they had advised that based on the length of the process that is involved with requesting a license, that they had suggested that two licenses be requested. The EDC went through a pretty significant discussion and review of the town to determine where those licenses would best be positioned and ensuring that there wasn't a concentration of all-alcohol licenses within certain areas. So that's why the 495 to the Eastern Line and the South Worcester to the North Attleboro Line was selected. Additionally, I know Mr. Freeman had mentioned the Quick Stop. This license would be, or a license if this were passed, would be available to any applicant, including those who currently own the Quick Stop. And I believe, and Mr. Unitz can speak to this as well, that they have inquired multiple times whether or not the town had an additional alcohol license, because I think they're just beer and wine right now. But the comment that was made in respect to the marijuana retail establishment, that is true. If we added two more licenses, we would be able to have a third retailer in town. I want to be clear both on the alcohol licenses as well as the marijuana licenses. Although the town has these available, the select board is under no obligation to issue licenses to anyone. So these would just be available. If they felt that there was a purpose to have it, economic development per se, they would be able to award a license. And again, the recommendation for the review committee is to make sure that there is an appropriate review, it is consistent across multiple applicants, and the review committee would not promise anything similar to what has happened in the past. The review committee would provide its recommendation to the board, and then the board would take those recommendations and do their further review as well before considering a issuance of any license.
Okay, thank you. Madam Select, did you still want to? Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, Mr. Kimball, and he has given us, and I want to make sure that we just have it correct. The Article 10, as written in your warrant, it would continue to be the same until you get to that sentence. It says authorize the transfer of such license within one year after the date of issuance. And then we would put a period there. And then the next word saying, and authorizing the select board to establish a liquor license review committee and a competitive procedure for allocating liquor licenses that are now available or that may become available in the future, provided. Those words would come out. You would start then with the word however, and say however that the general court may make clerical or editorial changes, and the rest of it is as written in the warrant. Is that a fair representation, Mr. Kimball? Okay, so basically what you're doing is you're taking out the words, starting with and afterward says date of issuance, and stopping at the word future, or stopping at the word provided, I guess. Taking those words out, and I believe, I don't want to speak for Mr. Kimball, but I believe his intent is to eliminate the portion that talks about the review committee and leave in the part about going for the licenses and the locations. Is that generally fair? Okay, so there's a move to amend the article. Is there a second? There is a second. So we now have an amendment. Discussion on Article 10 will now be limited to the amendment. So we'll continue discussion, but we will only have discussion on the amendment itself. So is there any discussion on the amendment to eliminate that language, which essentially eliminates the review committee? Thompson.
Cody Thompson, 30, Keith Drive. I just want to point out that the select board has a lot on their plate on a regular basis, and the setting of a committee may assist them in making a determination on who they appoint a license to. Not necessarily that the committee is going to determine who will receive that, but they will do the due diligence and make a recommendation to the board about, you know, the various applicants in order to make the select board's time used more efficiently. So that's.
Okay. Is there any discussion or debate on the amendment to Article 10? Okay, seeing no hands, we'll move to a vote. We will be voting on the amendment. If you wish the amendment to be included in the main motion, then you would vote yes. If you do not want the amendment included and you want a chance to vote on the original article as indicated, you would vote no. So we're only voting on the amendment. Everybody clear about that part? Okay. And if there's no further discussion, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of amending Article 10, please indicate by raising your hands. All those opposed? Oh, boy. All right, let's do that one more time. All those in favor of amending Article 10, please raise your hands. All those opposed? Okay, I thought it was one way the first time, and I thought it was the other way the second time, so the night wouldn't be complete unless we had a standing vote. And later, I'm also going to provide a new bylaw that says the current town moderator is never allowed to cross the town borders. So we will now vote, I'm going to give the town clerk and her a chance to gather her staff because we will have to take the standing vote. And when I ask you, when I call for the ayes, I will ask you to stand and remain standing until I ask you to sit down. If you're going to move around, please do so immediately because I don't want people standing as we're taking the vote because it's very confusing to the counters. So as soon as we get our crack team of counters in, they have been out in the hallway counting all night just to prepare for such an eventuality. Okay, are we ready, Lucia? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're now voting on the amendment. If you vote yes, you're saying you want the article changed to be the amended version. If you vote no, you're saying no, you want to proceed to vote on the original version. So all those who are in favor of amending Article 10, please stand and remain standing Thank you, you may be seated. Now, all those voting no opposed to the amendment, please rise and stay standing until I ask Thank you, you may be seated. The result of the vote on the motion to amend, yes, 46; no, 50. The amendment fails. We will now return to the original motion. Is there any more discussion on Article 10 as it's originally offered? Seeing no hands, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of Article 10, please indicate by raising your hand. All those opposed? You're playing with me, right? I'll do it one more time. All those in favor of Article 10, please raise your hands. All those opposed? Article 10 passes by majority vote, is declared by the moderator. Article 11.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Freeman.
I'd like to call for a standing vote. I think I'd have to have seven other people support that if you just stood up.
That'd be correct. If seven people rise and vote in favor of vote, I must conduct a standing vote. Okay, we have seven people. We passed $65 million in about five minutes and we're. All right, we're going to take a standing vote on Article 10. So just when you thought it was safe to go back in the front room, folks, your counters are coming back.
Donuts and alcohol and pot.
By the way, this might make it time to let everybody know that there is a thing called electronic voting available for town meeting, and maybe it's something that the town may want to look into at some point in time, but there you go. All those in favor of Article 10 as originally offered, please stand and please remain standing Okay, thank you, you may be seated. All those opposed to Article 10 as originally proposed, please stand and please remain Okay, thank you, you may be seated. Final vote total of the standing count on Article 10 is yes, 55; no, 46. Article 10 passes by majority vote. Article 11.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to amend
I move that the town vote to amend Chapter 110 of the General Code, Section 110-23, Funeral Leave, by approving Article 11, all as printed in the June 7, 2022 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Any questions, discussion, or debate on Article 11? Mr. Freeman.
Yeah, John Freeman, 19 Freeman Street. Could somebody just clarify why this has to be voted by, at the town meeting or it is, or is it, couldn't it be in the contracts? And, that's all, I mean, you know, it sounds like a contract thing, maybe there's something I missed, I don't know.
Mr. Town Manager.
This is for the personnel bylaw employees, they're not part of a union contract. So this just puts the personnel bylaw employees in line what is available to the union contracts for the two CNA, A and CNA B, and also AFSCME Clerical and Highway.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Yes, sir. Take your time.
Sorry. So if they take that out...
Could you, could you, take your name and address, please?
Rob Wells, 341 West South Worcester Street. If they took that out, what's in its place? I mean, do they get something in that situation?
Mr. Town Manager.
So, what this is doing is for employees that are part of the personnel bylaw, for the death of a child or a spouse, you receive five days, and your mother and father, you receive five days of leave instead of three.
Oh, so they're going to give them five instead of three? Fantastic. Mr. Freeman.
Yeah, just as a point of interest, we're going from something like three days to five days, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, and you can get extra days and so on. It'd be interesting to know, if you're fortunate enough to not have anyone close pass away when you're employed by the town, do you get paid for that when you retire?
No.
No, okay, that's good.
Okay, let's just not have discussions with the entire group, please, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, do you think?
Ms. Freeman.
They're trying if they can get away with it?
As you've told me many times, what I think doesn't matter, so let's just sit down and get rest. There any other discussion on Article 11? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 11, please indicate by raising your hands. All those opposed? Article 11 passes by unanimous vote, is declared by the moderator. Article 12.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to amend the Norton zoning bylaws, Chapter 175 of the General Code, Article 6, Dimensional Regulations, Section 175-6, I'm sorry, 175-76, Doc. 2, Table of Dimensional Requirements, with strike-through text to be deleted and underlined text to be inserted, all as printed in Article 12 of the June 7, 2022 Annual Town Meeting
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is an article that goes before the planning board, and so therefore I'll turn by our bylaws, I'll turn to a planning board representative and ask, have you, has the planning board considered this, on what date, and what was the result of the vote on it?
Sure. I actually have a presentation up on the screen that covers that, if I can do that.
I kind of need you to say, it's one of those funky rules that we like to get out of the way early, I know you probably have to find it now, but...
So, the planning board did vote unanimously to recommend this article for town meeting.
Okay, you'll tell us the date later, I reckon, no doubt. And yes, Mr. Freeman for the planning board.
Good evening, everyone. Again, I'm Tim Griffin, I'm the chair of the Norton Planning Board. Thank you everyone for being here, and thank you to Mike Units for lobbying the NBA to make sure the KIAS Celtics play tomorrow night instead of this evening. Just going to give you a brief overview of the articles submitted by the board for this meeting, so I'm going to run through a little bit of, I'm going to run through Articles 12, 13, and 14, all of which the planning board voted on. These cover a number of different changes to help promote economic development, they include added definitions, changes to the use table, dimension regulations, affordable housing bylaw, and all sorts of other things that we've had to read that you have in front of you. So if you've been watching our meetings, we've been working on these for a while, they were created as part of a subcommittee in January, and they were recommended for a town meeting on February 1st and February 15th, and the Finance Committee recommended them for the warrant on the 25th of April. So, I apologize, I'm going to go out of order a little bit according to the warrant, but this runs according to the zoning bylaws in sequential order, and I had to pick one. So, Article 13 covers the addition of a number of different specified listings to the bylaw and changes to the use tables. So why do we do this? Norton zoning bylaws are not inclusive. That means that if it isn't listed on the zoning use table, it's not allowed, even if it's something that feels like it should be allowed. So on a couple of occasions, town staff has been unable to find a matching use to a proposed business and can't tell them where in town they can go, and we don't want that, which is why we have a number of different definitions to align with those use tables. Some of those are artisan food and beverage or manufacturing.
Are we talking about Article 12 or Article 13?
This covers Articles 12, 13, and 14. Would you like me to break it up and go ahead and introduce it?
No, I'm just trying to be stickler, we're supposed to discuss one article at a time, but if there is overlap that affects it, then we can certainly allow that. I just wanted to make sure that nobody thought we were skipping articles and jumping ahead.
Correct. I'm very, I'll call that specifically.
Thank you.
So, changes there, if you can go to the next one. These are some of the additions to the commercial use table with different types of offices, and if you continue, industrial use table as well. You'll notice that life sciences appears on both pages, part of that updates included adding clarity on life science manufacturing and life science offices, so we wanted to be clear that if a pharmaceutical company wanted to have an office space, they wouldn't need to get into a debate about whether they need to be in industrial zone or not. So, that covers the additions to the use tables. Article 12 specifically covers an adjustment to the dimensional requirements, again in the use tables, for R40 Village Commercial and the Village Center Core Zones, and designed to potentially allow higher density in those zones. You can see the details in the warrant. In simple terms, what this does is it removes the stratified lot requirements in those zones and replaces them with one minimum for anything with three or more units on a lot. Does this mean people can put whatever they want on the site? Of course it doesn't. There are a number of other zoning bylaws that come into play. So, anything with three or more units automatically requires a special permit that comes before the planning board. Those units also automatically have parking minimums and various other things attached to them, so if you add more units, you need space for parking, which means trying to put a big project on a small lot, nonsensical, very quickly. There are also maximum heights and minimum setbacks from adjacent lots with any size project, so there are a number of different regulations governing any project, so in the interest of streamlining and reducing redundancy, that's why that suggestion is here. I'll add that at one point in the board's decision-making process on Article 12, we had discussed reducing the lot requirement sizes, but once we saw the petition to Articles which are connected to Village Commercial Zoning, which are Articles 16 and 17, we made the decision as a board to table those thoughts for future discussions. So those are not here, even though they were discussed during our public sessions. And finally, Article 14 is very simple, it's a simple request to add one additional line to our affordable housing bylaw, saying it doesn't apply if the town is over the 40B housing threshold. If current projects are completed, we should be over that threshold. It may feel obvious to some, but again, we're removing ambiguity as we can. I'll step away from the microphone now. Mr. Moore, I'll stand here in case anybody has any specific questions.
Okay, is there any questions, comments, or debate on Article 12? Mr. Freeman.
Yes, John Freeman, 19 Freeman Street. If, some people will recall, a couple years ago, or three or four, I don't know, time flies, we rezoned Norton Center from Howard Street on one side, from the Common on the other side, from Howard Street to the school, from the Common through the donut shop, and it became Village Core Commercial. The main, the main reason for this was to promote tenements in the center of town, it actually outlawed single-family houses. Now, if you look on this dimensional requirements, for, for any, any building, any building that you can have in this, in this new zone, VCC, would it have to be, it'd have to have two units per building or more, and the chat used to go up to seven units per building, but now it will just read if this passes, three or more units, so I don't, I don't know what the upper limit would be. But, that's a pretty good stretch of land there, and I suspect it, on the, well, south side, on the left going towards Attleboro, there's quite a bit of land in back there that probably is encompassed in this zone, I'm not sure, I don't remember what the map is, but I think it'd be safe to say that there's probably ten buildable acres near the center that's zoned this way. So if you take ten acres, in square feet, that's 440 square feet, if you divide that by 5,000 square feet that you need for three or more units per building, you'll come up with eighty-eight lots, if you will, that you can put a building on. Eighty-eight lots that you can put a building on with three or more units, and if you went to seven units, that's 616 housing units. I don't know how high they make these, I know there's a height restriction in town, but if, if this falls under 40B, that, that rule is out the window. I mean, I don't know where, how people in this town are going to move, and I don't pers, I honestly don't know what Norton Center full of tenement houses is going to do for the town, other than making it more congested, more noisy, more crime, and all the things that a lot of people in this room probably came to Norton to avoid. Now we're encouraging people that are still living in the city to come out here, and you should be aware that the federal government is pushing this. In New York, they tried to, in Westchester County, they tried to override the local zoning. Fortunately, Trump stopped it when he got in office, but it's back on the table, and this is all part of it. And not only should you shoot this down, there's probably some other things you could shoot down that he just talked about, but you should consider repealing Village Core Commercial, I guess, VCC zoning in the center of Norton. If anyone wants to question anything I said, I could, you know, try to clarify what I said because I, I hope you people understand what the, what this planning board and this planner is trying to do for the town, and it's not going to benefit anyone except the people that work for the town. Thank you.
Mr. Griffin, would you like to respond to anything in there?
Sure, I'll respond, just, just within Article 12, the only change is, as you see in the warrant, the removal of the stratified minimum lot size requirement for four units or more, five units or more, six units or more, or four units, five units, six units, seven units, that's all. Anything three or more is already a special permit, and having that stratified level where what is the lot size needed, and then you try and change the plan, and now all of a sudden you work with a different requirement, we felt that was cumbersome, and we thought that this was a much more streamlined approach. All of the village, all of the other zoning requirements are as-is, that's the only thing that we're changing, and any project that would fall into this change is already covered under a special permit. If Mr. Freeman would like to bring further votes on Village Center Core at a future town meeting, he's certainly welcome to, that's his right.
Thank you. Mr. Washall.
Steve Washall, 311 Road. I just wanted to say one thing about the density, is that in Norton, we have a lot of neighborhoods that are non-conforming lots. My own is a 50 by 100 lot, meaning it's 5,000 square feet. The size of Village Center Core is not something we're not familiar with, the density is not something we're unfamiliar with, we just have a lot of lots grandfathered in. You couldn't rebuild my neighborhood without that special sizing for a lot, you couldn't recreate what I grew up with. Right now, the minimum lot size is 60,000 square feet, that could be 12 of my properties, that's basically my road, you could eliminate every family on my road, replace it with one. That's, I, I think the small lot sizes are really important. Just mine.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman.
Yeah, just, just to clarify this, to make sure I understand it correctly, if this, if this dimensional requirement thing is passed, the only, you only need 5,000 square feet to put more than three units on 5,000 square feet, is that correct?
That is correct. You meet all the other requirements and get a special permit.
Could you repeat that again, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I didn't really mean to interrupt it, but we're going to pause.
Could you just repeat that answer, please?
Yeah, could you repeat that?
Let's say, yes, assuming you meet all of the other zoning requirements and you receive a special permit, which carries a number of other conditions, and the board can say no.
Okay. Yeah. How long have we had a planning board in this town? How long have we had zoned? We managed to avoid it until 1974, I think there probably was a planning board before that. Back in the 50s, it was only some subdivision rules and town bylaws. So, if the people in this room trust this planner and any planning board, now we're in the future, okay? To look out for your best interest, you should look at what we've got in this town now, which is a mismatch of zoning.
Mr. Freeman, can we please center the discussion on the specifics of Article 12?
Well, I'm trying to.
You're not doing well in that regard, so if you could center it a little more on the, on the specifics.
I, I asked the people to consider whether the zoning that's been developed in this town over the years, by planning boards over the years, works the way they expected it to, because I say it never does.
Okay, that's not what we're discussing here, we're discussing the specifics...
Well, we certainly are discussing this.
No, we're not, Mr. Freeman, we're discussing the specifics of Article 12.
I'm discussing the viability of rules like this.
Mr. Freeman, we're discussing, if you have further questions or comments on the specifics of Article 12, please go ahead, otherwise, please sit down.
I want to, I want to comment on the viability of these rules working out the way they're envisioned. Now, if that's got nothing to do with this article, I don't know what to tell you.
Okay, but could you keep going on any specifics that you have in Article 12?
Yes, the specifics are, they always tell us, oh, it needs a special permit, oh, well, we don't have to do it that way, this, that, and the other thing, but it never seems to work out for the town. So that's why I say, vote this down, vote the other articles that we took out of order. And we've got another important article coming up I want to speak on also.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, sir, yep.
Ben Dearmore, 286 Dalton Ave. I move to vote on Article 12.
You're moving the question?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll officially second. The planning board is voting.
Yeah, it doesn't really, you, but, okay, I know there are still people around, but I think I'm going to recognize that motion to move the question. A motion to move the question is a motion to end debate. If you vote, if you vote yes, we will end debate and immediately go to a vote on Article 12. If you vote no, we will continue to discuss and debate Article 12. So the question now before you is whether or not to end debate. All those in favor of the motion to move the question and end debate, please indicate by raising your hand. All those opposed, the motion to move the question passes unanimously. We will now go to the vote on Article 12. Article 12 is a zoning change, and Article 12 will require a two-thirds majority vote in order to pass. All those in favor of Article 12, please indicate by raising your hands. All those opposed, Article 12 passes by a two-thirds majority vote, as declared by the moderator. Article 13.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to amend the Norton zoning bylaws, Chapter 175 of the General Code, Article 2, Definitions, Sections 175 through 2 dot 2, Article 4, Use Regulations, Section 175 dash 4 dot 4, and Article 4, Use Regulations, Section 175 dash 4 dot 5, by inserting the underlined text and by deleting the strikethrough text and by renumbering accordingly, all as printed in Article 13 of the June 7, 2022 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Thank you. So Madam Chair, you're moving that as, there's no changes, as printed in the warrant?
As printed in the warrant, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Griffin, can you tell us about the planning board's action on this? Have they taken action, and what was the result?
Yes, the planning board took action in our February 15 meeting unanimously recommending this article for town meeting.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions, comments on Article 13? Mr. Washall.
Steve Washall, 31 Wampum Road. I just wanted to say to everybody that this article particularly might be one of the most important of the night for the future of our town. It contains a lot of stuff we really could use in this town as far as zoning uses, and I recommend we vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Wiggins.
Peter Wiggins, 157 Metzger Avenue, 439. I agree with Steve because we need more stuff in town, and we need, we need to move this town forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman.
I'd like to recommend vote no on this. The main reason is, it's, it isn't, the definitions aren't clear, the paragraphs. Artisan food and beverage, for instance, who determines what artisan is? Okay? Small-scale indoor recreation, who determines what size it is? I don't think it's spelled out here. Manufacturing, I don't know. You know, there's too much left to interpretation, but of course, that's probably what they want.
Mr. Washall.
Steve Washall, 31 Wampum Road. With all due respect, the definitions are right after. If it says artisan food and beverages, it includes bakeries, microbreweries. It says how much they can brew. Artisan distilleries, how much they can distill. As far as small indoor recreation, it says arcades, dance studios, bowling alleys. We're all pretty familiar with the sizes of those buildings. I don't think there's any, anything misinterpreted here. But not including them would mean none of those businesses would have a place in town at all. So that's why they're being added.
Thank you.
Mr. Select Board Member.
I just wanted to add that the planning board took quite a bit of time getting this, getting this put together to make it easier for businesses. And just as a side note, again, the planning board is elected by the town, and there were three open seats with nobody running this past election.
Is there any other discussion, comments, or questions on Article 13? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. This will also require a two-thirds majority vote for passage. All those in favor of Article 13, please indicate by raising your hands. All those opposed, Article 13 passes by unanimous vote, as declared by the moderator. Article 14.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to amend the Norton zoning bylaws, Chapter 175 of the General Code, Article 19, Affordable Housing, Section 19 dot 3, applicability, by inserting at the end of the existing language the sentence, zoning bylaw, Article 19, shall not be required when the town is at or above 10% of the Chapter 40B subsidized housing inventory threshold, all as printed in Article 14 of the June 7, 2022 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin, can you tell us about the planning board's action on this article?
Yes, the planning board voted unanimously at our February 15 session to recommend this to town meeting.
Okay, thank you. I want to make sure, thank you to Council of Pointers, I want to make sure that that last article, Article 13, I think I declared it passed by a unanimous vote, which would cover the two-thirds majority. So it did pass by unanimous vote. Okay, thank you, Mr. Griffin. Mr. Tool, that was the Select Board Member.
Mr. Moderator, just more of a question for Mr. Griffin. The way I interpret Article 14 is that it promotes building, but if we make the pie bigger, wouldn't that move the 10% equate, the 10% 40B down? So wouldn't it actually just change the percentage? So we're at 10%. So if someone had 12%, and if they came in, they wouldn't be required by the 40B, if they built more houses, we would fall below the 10% because that would make the pie bigger? Is that my, is that what this would do?
Okay, yeah. Mr. Griffin, can you answer that?
So it's just, the intention with the change is to clear up some ambiguity. There's nothing in the bylaw as written that says it doesn't apply when we're over the 40B threshold. So by specifically saying this doesn't apply when we're over the 40B threshold, that's what we're doing.
Mr. Kimball.
I think the intentions are okay here. I'm trying to wrap my mind around what we're talking about. This town for years, 24 years I served on the Board of Selectmen, opposed many 40B projects. We spent many years, many hundreds of thousands of dollars opposed to affordable, for Chapter 40B comprehensive permitting, affordable housing. In an effort to get us over this mandate of 10%, which all towns are required to have, while still on the board, we approved the brand-new 40B that's being built behind McDonald's. I know everyone's questioning what's on Mansfield Ave. That's the last 40B to be built in Norton. That put us over the 10%. We finally made it. After fighting it for almost 40, 30, 40 years, we finally reached a point where we can say to all future developers, you can't come into town, you can't change our zoning bylaws, you can't ignore them, you have to comply with everything, the rules and regulations that we have. So now we have a point, we're at a point now where over 10%. And to Mr. Tool's point, if we build 100 houses, we need to come up with 10 more affordable. If we build 500, we have to come up with 50. At some point, as you're building new homes, your Chapter 40B, your affordable units continues to drop. And at some point, you hit that 9.9%, and guess what? You've got developers sitting on the sidelines saying, ha, they're finally at 9.9. We can go in there, we can build 100, 200, 300 units of housing, and they can't do a darn thing about it. So I would highly recommend, and I'm sure their intentions are good, but for every new home that's built in Norton right now, if you build a subdivision of eight homes, two of those have to be affordable. That's how you kind of keep the momentum going. If we allow the developer, say the developer right now on Pine Street, let's say he's going to go in and build 40 new homes, in fact, 10% of those should be affordable, which means that four of them should be affordable. So be careful about how you do this. I don't think we should ever take our eye off the 40B issue. And I think the comprehensive permitting process is something that we have to be concerned about, and I would highly recommend, and do not vote this in favor, continue to allow developers to add affordable housing to people, which is what this is supposed to be all about. Add more affordable housing, add additional stock to our inventory. At some point, we're going to, we're going to fall behind 10% again anyway. It's only a matter of time, but in the meantime, continue to build on it. Don't suddenly say, okay, we've reached that 10%, let's sit on it now, we don't have to worry about it until it drops under 10, and then we're right back to where we were. With neighborhoods screaming and yelling because they're building units on marginal land, ignoring our bylaws, it just doesn't make sense. So I would encourage you not to vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin.
Just to clarify, this doesn't say that we aren't going to want affordable units in any development. It simply says that it shall not be required. And just in terms of how this bylaw's been applied, I'm going to ask town, if the town planner could speak just to historical perspective.
Yes, Mr. Town Planner.
Hi, I'm Paul D. Giuseppe, the town planner. And I did some research back into this provision, and I could only find two instances where a special permit was issued that led to affordable housing. There were six units that were approved, but actually only two have ever been constructed. That's over a 20-year period under this provision. The great majority of our affordable housing does come from the 40Bs.
Yes, sir.
Cody Thompson, 30 Keith Drive. Just a question to the planning board as to whether or not any consideration was given on, with the inclusion of this language that's proposed, allowing builders to come in to the gentleman's point. If you allow them to come in and build without Section 40B, and now we fall below Section 40B, you end up with another major development to get back in line with 40B. And then you end up with a group of haves and have-nots, where right now you have kind of everyone distributed evenly. You've got 40Bs included within developments where it may be 10 houses, you have one affordable, or 10 apartment units, one affordable. It's kind of dispersed. And was there any consideration to an unintended consequence of creating poor parts of town by putting this zoning law, or putting this amendment into the zoning law that then allows developments to come in and build up to where we now need to put in a major development that is solely 40B?
Mr. Griffin, that was certainly not a consideration that we felt was something that could be construed from this. This isn't touching anything around the state rules around 40B. That's going to happen with or without this bylaw, whatever houses are built or not built. This is simply saying that the affordable housing bylaw written in front of you in 14, in Article 14, is it, does not, is not required when the town is at its 40B threshold. We can still look to add affordable units if a project merits them. We can still encourage developers to include them. It simply says that it shall not be required when the town is at that threshold. It's something that they wouldn't need to, that they might take at face value and do anyway. We just tried to remove ambiguity by adding the language, that's all.
So I would submit that a business developer, a developer of real estate, is not going to voluntarily build affordable housing if they do not mean to.
There are a number of conditions that can be included on any special permit or any project.
And I understand that. I just, I wanted to make it at least aware to everyone that there could be unintended consequences of this. I think the intent there is to allow development that doesn't have to, and it can bring in more developers that are willing to spend because they can make more money by not having to include 40B housing. But when you do that, to Mr. Kimball's point, you now raise that total number, total amount of housing, and your percentage then drops. And if you fall below that, then you end up having to develop a large-scale 40B-only or majority 40B, and then you end up with a poor, a poor section of town, for lack of a better term. Thank you.
Mr. Washall.
Steve Washall, 31 Wampum. I just want to say I can't imagine any development that we would want to purposely exclude poorer people from. It just doesn't seem like an acceptable thing. I've been pretty damn poor my whole life, and I'd rather be allowed in a neighborhood by choice. That's just, I think affordable housing is important.
Steve.
Oh, I'll get to you, sir. Didn't see you earlier, I'll get to you. Go ahead. Good.
I just wanted to correct a point. A developer wouldn't come in and have to develop, you know, say 100 units come in, they wouldn't have to be half low-income, they would still be 10%. So I think that wouldn't create a whole section of town with lower-income housing.
Yes, sir.
Craig Venison, 23 Reservoir Street. I need some clarification on this 10% on the 40B. You mentioned that the 101 apartments being built in the McDonald's is following under the 40B subsidized housing. Is there, the 60 apartments that are planned for, the land next to Alberto's, that's generally in the same area, is that going to be 40B as well?
I'm going to let him answer that, but we're straying a little bit from the article here, and I'd like to come back to the specific.
I just want to know where we, does that put us at 12, 13%, 14%?
I'm going to let him answer the question, yeah.
Thank you.
I was simply going to say that the planning board doesn't approve 40B projects, so that I don't, that's not something that I'm necessarily the right person to answer for, but if, yeah.
Sure, Mr. Town Planner.
The 40Bs were approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals, so that project, that's at 253 Mansfield, that was approved for 60 units, and 15 of them are affordable.
I'm just going to say, I oppose this, and I'd like to move the question.
I can't let you do that because you spoke to it first by saying you oppose it, you can't speak to it and move the question, so.
I tried.
Yeah. If there's no discussion, though, we don't have to move the question, we can just go straight to the vote. And seeing no hands, I think we're ready. We'll move to the vote. This also requires a two-thirds majority vote for passage. All those in favor of Article 14, please indicate by raising your hand. All those opposed, Article 14 fails to achieve a two-thirds majority vote and is defeated. Article 15.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to amend the town charter and the town bylaws to create a Department of Public Works and the position of Department of Public Works Director, and to create a Water and Sewer Commission to replace the elected Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners, and to approve Article 15, all as printed in the June 7, 2022 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Okay, so Article 15 is being moved as completely printed in.
That's correct.
Okay. Any discussion on Article 15? Select Board Member.
Yes, Mr. Town Moderator. I have actually a presentation also. If I may, just to kind of just, you'll see in Article 15, there's a lot of, a lot of paragraphs to actually create an umbrella of Department of Public Works, which the Highway Department. umbrella of Department of Public Works, which the Highway Department and the Water Department would fall underneath. And this obviously has to be done by a bylaws. It needs to be changed, and the charter needs to be changed. And it has to be approved at town meeting as well as a vote of the town election. May I move to the presentation?
Sure, absolutely.
Currently, the organizational chart of the Highway Department, as you see here, is resident voters, select board, town manager, and the Highway Superintendent, the Water and Sewer Department, the Resident Voters, Water and Sewer Commission, the Water and Sewer Superintendent, and the Town Manager. What this article would be proposing would be an appointed of the Water and Sewer Commission to, with the Water and Sewer Superintendent, okay? But it also would just create a Director of Public Works that would oversee both departments. The Water, compared to other proposals like this, this is not a personal and vendetta against the Water Commission. They're doing a very good job. What again is this is to try to find synergies and cost savings of both employees, capital equipment, and so forth. The Water and Sewer Commission, their responsibilities now on the left-hand side and the responsibilities on the right-hand side. There will be no change in the responsibilities. They would be acting just like the three highlighted committees right now, the Board of Health, the Conservation Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals, that make recommendations to departments. Currently, we have several town capital projects coming, the water main improvements on South Worcester and East Hodge Street, sewer pump station improvements on Holly Road and Knoll Street, water main improvements on Dean Street. Hence, as you can see here, one of the goals of this is to give, with the Director of Public Works, is to give an oversight to someone that's overseeing this, or a second set of eyes, working with the engineering departments that are helping the Water and Sewer Department, but also being the backstop for the town. Right now, other towns, this is the breakdown. I evaluated 130 towns in Bristol County, Norfolk, Plymouth, and Middlesex. 86% of the towns have a public works department that include water, sewer, and highway. 15% of the towns have park and rec included in there, and 52% of the towns have a town engineer. So the Department of Public Works Director that would oversee both the Highway Superintendent, actually the Highway Department, and the water and sewer department, they would be an individual with engineering experience. Salary range would be 123 to 170. The salary sourcing mechanism would be 86% water and sewer and 14% from the town operational. The reason for that is the percentage that they feed into the town budget. The individual managed projects, departments, and resources, ensuring cost-saving with services and projects while expanding services. This would be one of their main goals and would be one of the measurements of their success. One of the goals that I looked at is the budget. When you look at these budgets, right now, the police are 3.9 million, fire about 4.3 million, schools are 32. These all have senior-level management overlooking their budget that basically overlooks the budget and also managing departments. When you look at the Highway Department, we have a superintendent who's done a great job. We have a superintendent on the Water and Sewer, but collectively, they have $8.1 million estimated budget for fiscal year 23. The Water and Sewer Department right now is managed by the superintendent but report to a volunteer board. The goal would be to consolidate all that budget and give a professional level or senior-level management to that. This requires change of both the charter, the bylaws and the charter, the approval of town meeting, hopefully tonight, approval of town election, and then would go into effect fiscal year 2025 with the timing of the budget. Actually, I'm just going to jump right here. Actually, we'll step back up here. So why is DPW now? For years, citizens have been complaining about issues that are mainly oversight and planning issues. This would solve that. Why is the article being proposed now? This is an effort to find cost savings with employees, operation expenses, capital equipment, while expanding services, also hiring a director-level supervisor, engineer or engineering experience for town project review and management. We talked about how they would be paid. This does not, does the water enterprise account remain intact? It would. And would it eliminate the Water Department or the Highway Department? It would not. Do other towns do it? We talked about that. Our elected Water Commissioner is better. Since 2001, there's been consistent open seats or joint appointments over the Water Commission by the, from the Water Commission and the Select Board. Would it change the role of the Water, would this change the role of the Water and Sewer Commission? I spoke about that. It would not change their responsibilities. What other boards would serve in the capacity? We talked about that. And I know I flew through that because it's late in the hour, so I wanted to just kind of move to questions, because I bet you have none.
All right. Okay, yes, sir. We've got the gentleman in the blue shirt, and then we'll go to Mr. Freeman.
Hi, my name is Stephen Bernstein. I live at 18 Newland Street, Norton, of course. And I'm a recently elected Water and Sewer Commissioner. Thank you for voting for me. I was appointed by the Joint Board with the Board of Selectmen and the Water and Sewer Commission on January 5, 2022. I joined the commission because I felt with my career experience, which includes over 50 years as a registered professional civil engineer with mostly water and sewer-related type projects, and my relationship with numerous cities and towns and regulatory agencies, would help the department, the commission, and the town with my, and be helpful. Also, I was an elected town Water Commissioner for six years in Randolph, Massachusetts, until the town changed the former government and created a DPW with five elected commissioners. I am not opposed for the formation of a DPW, but I feel at this time it's premature because Article 15 does not thoroughly explain how it's going to truly function and, more importantly, be cost-effective for the town. Since the Board of Health recently presented the Warren article within the last three weeks, the Water and Sewer Commission have not been able to request information, which would be to explain the true cost expenses of the DPW and how it's going to properly function, nor the true cost of the DPW and whether or not there'll be any staff changes. From my research, and I'm not an attorney, but reading over the Massachusetts general laws, it states clearly under Section 41, Chapter 63 through A through F, that Water and Sewer Commissioners, as well as Public Works Commissioners, are to be elected and not appointed. I truly believe that we do not have enough facts and figures currently to implement this approach. I ask you to defeat this article.
I'm just going to go to the Town Council, who has a point, before we go to Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The one thing I want to point out is that for a charter, the whole idea of a charter is that it gets to shape the community the way the community wants it to. And with respect to governance, any charter change like the one we're talking about today would be deemed consistent with the general laws, but then that says, that is actually bylaw. Chapter 43B, Section 20, deems changes like this consistent. So if you don't have a charter, you go by what's in the general laws. If you do have a charter, you go by what's in the charter.
Hey, Mr. Freeman?
Yeah, I think that previous gentleman said the best of anything that was said tonight, and I think I want to second virtually everything he said. My concern is, get a fancy PowerPoint presentation, you're going to get an engineer, or somebody with engineering experience. So that means somebody's second cousin can qualify if they've worked for a contractor or something. But anyhow, we've been very lucky in this town. We've got a Highway Superintendent. Well, we've been very lucky in one respect. The other respect I have big problems with, but we've got a, we've got a Highway Superintendent now that learned from the ground up, from another fellow that learned from the ground up, from previous Highway Superintendents. We've always been known for good roads in this area. Try Attleboro, try Taunton, probably Eastern too, for that matter. We don't need some guy that's just got out of college with clean khaki pants and orange work shoes that never picks up a shovel when it need be. Would just add more expense. As far as the Water Department goes, it's a mess. The rates go up every quarter. I went over there once, must have been last spring or last fall. It was cooler weather, but there wasn't snow. I think I counted seven or nine trucks packed around the office there. I don't know what was going on inside because I wasn't allowed in because of COVID. So I don't know if they were in there playing cards or the department just has too many trucks, but there's something seriously wrong, and I don't think this article will cure that.
Mr. Freeman?
I'm finished.
You certainly are. And from now on, you will not denigrate people and town employees unless you have sound reason. I am through listening to you backfelling and insinuating against people when they're not yet to defend themselves, and that will not happen again. Is that clear? Thank you. Sit down. Mr. Freeman, sit down. Steve, did you, you were, okay, yes, sir. Okay, anybody at all.
Sorry, Mr. Town, Mr. Town Moderator. The question, the questions asked me was about the savings. I can't tell you exactly what the savings would be. This is an operational change. This is, it would be irresponsible to say, the town's going to save this much, because I don't know, and I'm not, I'm not being challenged there. The town has, for years, talked about changes within the Water Department. And one of the things that I am hoping to do with this change is to bring that change and to bring a full-time person that the superintendent reports to in both the Highway Department and the Water Department. And that's one of the challenges, changes. And I can't tell you, and this is a horrible thing to hear, but I can't tell you there won't be layoffs. It's up to that superintendent to say, this is what this is needed. This is what has to happen. I'd be irresponsible to say there wouldn't be. I hope there isn't, but it's up to them to do. The other thing is, this would be, there are certifications within the Water Department, and there are certifications in the Highway Department. Those individuals would stay put, but there is a level of laborers that could easily be cross, could be cross-used from within the departments. So with that, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hello again, everybody. Jim Jardine, 135 North Worcester Street, and one of your current Water and Sewer Commissioners. I've been on the Water Board for about, Water and Sewer Commission for about a year now. I've been a resident in Norton for over 20. And for my whole adult life, I've worked in the environmental industry, specifically in air quality testing and consulting. Now, you might ask how this qualifies me to be on a Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners. It doesn't. But what does qualify me in being this board is that I'm a concerned resident who was, on his own, wanting to come forward and serve on whatever the most appropriate board to suit his skill set was. And that's what I did. And it's as this concerned resident that I want to talk to you and speak a little bit about my thoughts on this article. I'm not in support of this article. I believe that it's missing too much information that you should know before voting on such a major change to the town. As written, it sounds nice on the surface, but there's so many areas that I think are vague and left unanswered, and I'd like to talk about some of them. On some of the frequently asked questions, one of them asks where the savings are going to come from. The answer that's given is to add things that will cost money. Now, as I said, I'm in agreement with the concept of a DPW. I'm not against that, against the formation of one. But it can be something that will work, but the potential savings you're going to get from it, they're years down the road. This is long-term. And initially, it's a major expense. Another question asked, how will the director be paid for? I think the more appropriate question to ask is, how will the transition to and the DPW as a whole be paid for? Because, as I just said, there are so many costs, way more than just a simple one salary of one person, which inevitably will probably turn into two people, an engineer and a director. But there probably also eventually be likely be an office staff, and an office for that matter, more vehicles, et cetera. These expenditures inevitably will lead to higher rates for the people of Norton for their water and their sewer. My point is that this should all be researched and have an appropriate kind of business plan to be able to present to you, so you know the nuts and bolts of exactly how it's going to be implemented before you decide to make that decision. There's a question of asking if elected Water Commissioners are better. It points out that there have been consistent appointments over the past years. And while true, that doesn't really answer the question. It does point out, though, that there's already a mechanism in place to appoint vacancies for an open seat. One of the things I've heard quite a bit numerous times through this process, a process, by the way, in which the Water Sewer Department and the Water Sewer Commission were mostly left out of along the way. But I've heard that the town needs a change in the Water Department. We need a change. Well, I would ask you, what is that change you really want? What is the one really important change that you needed? I would submit that that answer is obvious. At the end of the day, the change people wanted was clean drinking water. We had a problem with that. We don't now. That, after all, that's the end result of whatever you want, mainly wants from their municipal water system, is good water and a good infrastructure. Now, for the past year, I've had the privilege to get to know the department, and had the privilege of seeing from behind the scenes exactly what it takes to run a municipal.
Sure. I'm going to just ask, as I have with other speakers, if you could just bring it to the point where it's talking specifically about the article itself. I appreciate it, please.
My point is that the strides that the department has made over the past five years are leaps and bounds ahead of past departments, and that the change you wanted has already happened. The water you're drinking is cleaner than that. So basically, I would just encourage you all to consider carefully these points so that you can make a fully informed decision. One, the proposed cost of this article is going to be much greater than this article is leading you to believe. Two, the savings, if and when they come, are going to be long-term and many years down the road before they're realized. Three, the changes the town has wanted are already in place. And four, you will lose your ability to run for office as a concerned citizen. So in a few minutes, when you get to raise your hand, yea or nay on this, just please make sure that you understand all the things that I've said to you today. And that if this article passes, it's not necessarily going to improve your water quality. But in the long run, it's going to probably force you to pay more for the water that you already have. Thank you.
Select board member?
One of my questions, I think, was already answered. Will it allow employees to cross-train between the Water Department and the Highway Department? I think they said yes. I don't think this is knocking anyone current or in the past that's been on the Water Commission or the Highway Department. Many of you know that I was vocally against the charter change, but this was one of the sections that I was actually very much in favor of. So I wholeheartedly approve this. And, you know, to address the comment of clean water, that to me is a joke. It's not. So, thank you.
The gentleman in the back.
John Herr, Ford Draper Street. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for the Water and Sewer Department. I just want to address, as far as the operations of the department and the people that work at the department, I think it's only fair that I get to address what Mr. Freeman said.
It depends on what you're talking about. If we're going to talk about whether people were playing cards in the back, no, we're not going to address that.
Okay. Well, I'll just say this. I met Mr. Freeman that day. Mr. Freeman told me.
I'm not, I'm not going to.
Mr. Freeman told me.
I didn't let Mr. Freeman talk about it. I'm not going to let you, sir, talk.
So I can, I can be attacked?
Sure, that's why I stopped him. I did the best I could. It's been a career.
Well, if anyone's interested in hearing the truth behind that meeting, I'd be very interested in talking to you. As far as the proposal, I'm not going to say anything for or against it. I believe it was very well-prepared. I believe it was very well-prepared. I'm going to let the town make their own decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Mr. Thompson.
Cody Thompson, 30 Keith Drive. Just a couple of clarification points or points that I would like responded to. The first is, who currently is accountable for the roughly $8 million in budget for water and sewer? Is there, is there one single person accountable? Because the way I understand it is, they're accountable only to the voters.
The water and sewer is not $8 million. The water sewer and highway department are $8 million. The, I just don't know the exact numbers, what the breakdown was. But the highway, the highway department's budget is the superintendent through the town manager. The water and sewer department's budget is the superintendent through the water commissioner, through the water commission, because it's an enterprise account. And if I, if I misspoke on that, I would just yield to town manager.
Okay. And then the, the second point that I'd like to make is, heard the question I'd like answered is, let's say that this structure was in place while people were having all the water issues and the water filling station was taken out. Would the superintendent that was appointed be allowed to say, put it back in?
I, I hesitate to, as Town Council pointed out, you know, before, I hesitate to get into hypothetical situations because there are a lot of extenuating circumstances that could affect it, so I really don't think it's proper to be talking about hypothetical situations when we don't know all the details that could affect them back and forth. So I'm going to say that I'm not going to allow that question. Mr. Sweeney.
Mark Sweeney, 14 Laurel Lane. Been here 30 years in the town. The biggest crisis we had was the water before the filtration system came in. And at that time, the board of selectmen had no overseeing, and I think even the, the town manager had no oversight over that. Is that correct, Mr. Unis?
Well, if I may, just ask.
I, I think, I think Mr. Unis will correct me if I, if I say that the town manager does not have direct oversight over the water commissioners.
All right, so right now, it's just the, the board, the, the water board, or whatever you want to call it. And so they had their, the town fathers, I guess you want to say, had no oversight of our biggest crisis. So, Mr. Tool, this is going to bring the town fathers, the board of selectmen, or the select board, I'm sorry, and bring them into the picture, so, and the town manager, and have them take care of an issue and so, and, and deal with our biggest, if we have another big crisis like we did with the dirty water. This brings us back where the, the top people are in charge. Is that correct?
Mr. Choe.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think this is one of those areas where we are putting more oversight in a department that we just went through. They're doing a great job, but I think it's now time to put more oversight in this department. And it is, the, the water wasn't their fault, it was previous superintendents. They're doing a great job, but I think it's time, I do not want to tread on the water commission. I've been very careful in this process not to tread on the water department or the water commission. That's not my intention here.
But let's bring it to the top where it belongs. Thank you.
Yes, Steve. I just wanted to add one more question through the moderator, if possible. Does this eliminate any of the elected positions? That was a point that was brought up.
Mr. Tool.
And may I continue with a couple of points after that answer? It does not eliminate, and I was very, very particular on not to eliminate the water commission. That was not my intention of this design, where we've seen proposals to get rid of them. That was not my, my intention in any way, shape, or form. When we look at it, one of the things that we're, we're looking at is, I've met with the water commission to try to see if they, and I did not get any feedback from them on how they talk about supporting it, but I did not get any feedback from them regarding that. It, again, one of the goals of this is, it's going to be an $8 million budget, put a senior level management on there. On Main Street, a year, a year or two ago, we had a project, and there was a consult of the water commission, volunteer board, a lot saw this, they made a decision. An extra set of eyes that possibly was an engineer could have maybe predicted the 1.3 million that we had to do, we had to add to that project to extend it. I don't know, like I said, I don't have a crystal ball, but these are, these are the things that I want this director to look at and oversee. So I'm asking tonight for you to vote for the creation of the Department of Public Works.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Cheryl Senior, 169 Reservoir Street. In generally, I'm in favor of creating a DPW. I would have liked to have seen more information to get a better idea of what we have today versus what that will look like going forward as far as staffing and more specifically budget. I'd also like to know where it's going to be housed. That's not even addressed here, I don't believe.
Yeah, there are two things that we talked about, that this Department of Public Works is going to be this entity of this. There are administrative staffs in both places that will be used by the director of public works. The design, this is a charter change. We have a budget process to go through to lay out the budget on there. This isn't just willy-nilly, just kind of spend extra, but this is going to be, if the town manager in fiscal year '25 basically says, it's not there yet, the money isn't there yet to hire this individual, this is a charter change. This is what we're moving towards, and this is a vision. This isn't just, we're doing this willy-nilly, it's time to bring this change, and we are still restricted by this, this meeting for budget concerns.
Thank you. Did you, go ahead.
Well, I did ask where a DPW would be housed. Is it the intent to bring on one person and leave everything as it is?
As I, as I did mention earlier, that's putting the cart in front of the horse.
Okay.
Mr. Siller.
I'd like to move the question.
There is a motion to move the question. Motion to move the question. Is a motion to cut off debate. We will now proceed to vote. If you vote yes, you are voting to end debate and move directly to voting on the question. If you vote no, then you are voting to continue debate and continue debating Article, Article 16?
15.
Thank you, 15. All those in favor of moving the question, please indicate by raising your hands. All those opposed, the motion to move the question passes unanimously. We'll now move to vote on Article 15. Article 15 will require a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor of Article 15, please indicate by raising your hands. All those opposed, Article 15 passes by a two-thirds majority vote, is declared by the moderator. Article 16.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, I, where did it come from?
Oh, sorry.
Where are you?
No, that was me. I'm sitting over here making a mistake and quietly having a stroke because it's past my bedtime.
Yeah, be my guest. Madam Chair, go right ahead.
No, I'm all set for this one. Thank you.
Okay. Article 16. Article 16 is declared lost by lack of motion for the moderator. Article 17.
Mr. Moderator. I do mean it this time.
Yes.
Yes, sorry. I moved that the town vote to amend the Norton zoning bylaw, Article 3, zoning map in districts, and the Town of Norton zoning map adapted thereunder, which is entitled Zoning Map Town of Norton, Massachusetts, and dated June 1999, last revised May 8, 2021, by changing from the industrial zoning district to village commercial on an area of land along Elm Street and Cross Street containing approximately 16.25 acres and comprising the parcel of land as shown on the Town of Norton assessor's map as Map 17, Parcel 36.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Griffin, can you tell us about the planning board's action on this article?
Yes, I just said the planning board did meet on this article and voted unanimously to recommend it to town meeting.
Thank you.
Somebody left their notebook up here, I'm not sure who.
Is there any discussion, comments, or debate on Article 17? Mr. Freeman.
Yes. I have a question. This, this involves a rezoning of a single parcel, Map 17, Parcel 36. Till recently, I believed you weren't allowed to do that, would constitute what they used to call spot zoning. Maybe we could ask somebody that would be more up-to-date than me if that's still the law.
I'll be glad to yield to Town Council to answer that.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. You can always rezone a parcel that's abutted and nearby touching an existing parcel. It's also a matter that the, not even the Attorney General would make a judgment about, that's a judgment that a court would make. It is unusual for a court to find spot zoning.
So I guess the answer is, this is a perfectly legitimate way to write the article and vote on it. Correct?
I, I think that would say is the article is proper in its current form.
Hmm. Okay. All right. Well, that's, that's fine. But I'd like to speak against this rezoning. Give you a little history. I think it started in the 60s. Eddie Street was, Eddie Street was extended to Maple Street. It's the widest street in town. It's an 80-foot layout. The name of it's John Scott Boulevard. And virtually that entire length of it was zoned industrial. It was going to be the industrial area of Norton. Well, other than two lots that are occupied for industrial uses, the whole thing's gone There's all kinds of things that caused it. We don't have to get into that. Now, we've got 16, I think it's 16 acres roughly on Elm Street. It's been industrial for years, it's been zoned industrial. You want to change it to village commercial. Has anyone thought about any industrial uses in this town that wouldn't fill the town with people, wouldn't fill the schools with kids? Where, what are we going to do about industrial land? We keep getting rid of it because somebody wants to do something else with it rather than have an industrial use. I don't know. We see most industries go to China, I guess, but if they're not welcome here, that's another reason to go to China, although I don't think it's a legitimate reason. But they're, they're very short-sighted over the years, and I think if we have any industrial land, we should try to keep it. Right off the top of my head, I can't think of any other industrial land that would be available for, of course, we've got the industrial pack, but that's pretty hard for a fellow to start a business and have to go right into the industrial pack for a tremendous amount of money. So I think it would behoove the town to keep that an industrial area. I can't speak to anything else. It's a mess down there. The town's made a mess of it. The previous owners, I guess, have made a mess of it, although they're just operating as usual over the years. But it's, I would think that the planning board and a professional planner could come up with something more useful to the town for an industrial piece of land rather than zone it at village commercial. And I'll tell you what we're going to get, we're going to get more tenements down there. So if that's what you want, we'll resell it.
Mr. Kimball.
I guess I don't have a problem rezoning it, but I don't believe that today that parcel should be industrial. It just doesn't make sense anymore, or new homes in that area, more residential than anything else. I do have some concerns about future tenants of that property. We recently spent a few million dollars buying land elsewhere in town to build a new town hall and a new community building, and now we're going to rezone a parcel that we claim to be contaminated, be concerned about, and we're going to allow people to build homes on it and perhaps put a business on the first floor and homes above it. Anyone knows the lay of the land, they know that the Elm Street has a major parcel on Elm Street. On the other side of the body of water on Cross Street, there's an additional land in the back. That has to be residential. There's no way that you can put village commercial in there. So I'm not challenging the rezoning as much as I'm challenging why we just didn't go with a residential zoning on, on the property. In addition to that, we have two other parcels, one across the street on Elm Street and one on Cross Street, that are still going to be industrial. And I don't know why someone along the way, I know this is by petition, didn't include all three parcels and tried to get them all cleaned up at the same time. So I guess my one question is, well, I have another question too. The town spent about half a million dollars so far, maybe a bit more, cleaning up the property, so what assurances do we have if this parcel is redeveloped? The landowner that, reading Biden, who presently is on record as the owner, abandoned the property. The town doesn't own it, we're spending money on it. So as a taxpayer, what assurances are we going to have that we're going to get our money back, number one, no matter what happens to it? Is there a lien on the property? How's that being, how's that being worked out? And more importantly, the question of contamination. How are we going to, as a town, how do we sell a piece of property to someone knowing that it is contaminated? And if there is a plan to rectify that, perhaps someone should get up and tell us what that is? Thank you.
I'm going to, Mr. Tom Energy, do you want to answer any of that, or does anybody want to answer any of that? Go ahead.
I can answer some of it. We, well, one thing, we are not selling the property. We don't own it, nobody owns it. It's something that has to be done by whoever's going to develop the property, has to go through the courts to acquire the property, however that would be done. As far as the site, we did demo a portion of the building that the building commissioner at the time felt was unsafe. And also, we did receive grant money to do site assessment on the site, which we expect to be 80% done by the end of this month, and then hopefully the EPA will do the last 20%. As far as whether we recover the $500,000 that we expended to protect people traveling on Cross Street, that's something that we'll have to look at further down the line, whether that's something that we want to recover our $500,000, or do we want to see the site cleaned up, the buildings torn down, something developed on the site that'll then bring tax dollars to the town and more than cover the $500,000 in the future. We have to, it'll be a negotiating item, obviously. It'll depend on what it's going to cost to clean up the site. If someone has to spend millions of dollars to clean up a site and give us $500,000, they may not want to develop the site, and it will remain like it is, contaminated with a building on it that's falling apart. We have no responsibility to clean that site up. We don't own it. So as far as what's going to be developed on the site, obviously, has to be something that is going to generate enough revenue for the developer so that they can pay for the cleanup of the site. So that's something, obviously, that whoever's going to develop it will have to come to the planning board for site plan and review. And we'll, in that, that time, we'll hopefully have someone that can clean it up, get rid of the building, so the neighbors don't have to look at that anymore. And as far as keeping it industrial, I think as Mr. Kimball said too, it's a residential area. We obviously would love to have industrial development town, but we look toward We obviously would love to have industrial development town, but we look towards closer to the highways, and I just don't see it happening there.
Lee in the back there.
My day, April 63, Elm Street. I am the direct abutter to this parcel of land. My husband has lived in Norton his entire life and mostly on that property. Most people know that right on their right-hand side, Massey April lives there. We have gone through quite a bit with that factory, and there's nothing more that we would like to see than it gone because it is a toxic environment. It is, nobody wants to look at it anymore. But what I'm asking for is for this motion to be tabled, this article to be tabled. We have not been given very much information, as we just listened to that gentleman speak, is there are people that are interested in that property, and that is what apparently is what is bringing on this change to village commercial. Well, just to let everyone know that our property is also industrial, and we are surrounded by land that was previously owned by Reed and Barton. Because in the old days, when they used to dump into the reservoir, Reed and Barton owned the property that was in our backyard. And they also own the property that's to the left of us. So we are a direct abutter to that factory. And my neighbors will continue, but we need the opportunity to talk with the developer to find out what, we had water studies done. So this is a little bit more long than kind of what's being presented. But I'm asking to table Article 17.
Are you making a motion to table? I'm guessing again-
Until the next meeting, yes.
Okay. We can't really do that because we don't know when the next meeting is. But as we observed earlier, and I'm now an expert in passing over, so if you would like to move to pass over this article, and it were to pass, then what would happen is this article would be off the table and would have to, would have to come back and be placed on a future meeting.
Yes, that's what I asked for. And I asked everybody to stand behind us because, you know, we are directly affected by this building.
Okay. I just want you to make sure that, because you said your neighbors would speak, but if you make the motion to pass over, then I don't think they can-
Yes, I'm making the motion to pass over.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second to the motion? Okay, there's a second to the motion. The motion is to pass this article over. If you pass this article over, you will, in essence, be, it's not defeating it, it's just not taking any action on it for the course of this meeting. And I'm going to talk to council to make sure I know what I'm talking about.
They piled all that hazardous waste on that parking lot for a year and a half. That butts my butt. I'm on reservoirs too. All the wetlands back there?
Because of all the legalities and restrictions involved, if you were to change your motion to, oh, I don't know, something like you would like to refer this article back to the planning board for further study, then that would have the same effect as passing over. But Town Council informs me that voting on passing over zoning articles has a questionable legal history in court cases, and it would be, you could achieve the same thing by moving to refer it back to the planning board as you would by passing over. It has the same end result, but it doesn't leave a door open for somebody to get a legal loophole and come back and say, no, that didn't, that wasn't right.
Okay. So I'd like to take the motion and refer it back to the planning board.
Okay. So there's a motion to, so you're going to withdraw your motion to pass over?
I will withdraw the motion to pass over.
Okay. So there's a motion to refer the article to the planning board for further study, which would, in essence, complete action on it for tonight, with basically no action, and it would have to come back to another meeting. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, there's a second. So now we are discussing whether or not to refer the article back to committee. We're not voting yes or no on the article itself. We're only voting yes or no on whether you want to refer the article back to the committee, back to the planning board, and take no action on it this evening. Okay, so that's what we're doing. I'm going to go to this young lady who's been waiting patiently.
I am the petitioner on this, Ann Brenzley. This project has been going on, it's been dormant for over 10 years of what I've been, what I've been told when work has been done on the site. Other neighbors and abutters have actually been negatively impacted because there's nobody really in charge of what's going on. The town has to be very careful about putting their name out there because it looks like ownership. And you're talking about trying to own a site that's incredibly contaminated, which is not something I think anybody in this community wants to own. So where we are right now is somebody has to put a face to trying to remediate this. That includes talking to the EPA, that includes doing environmental studies on their own, that includes doing traffic studies for a project, that includes looking at an asbestos report that looks, it also includes having to be the face and be all of a sudden Reed and Barton, which to the public could be confusing if a developer comes in. Let me tell you, that's what I do all day long as a developer. I take problem projects. That's where I excel. That's what I've been doing for a very long time. And so being the face of a project like this is extremely important in getting the project going. And just by being the face, just by going ahead and putting my name on here, just by going ahead and putting a budget, a personal capital to do some of this work, the town and I have been able to start looking at grant money. We've already had a meeting with the EPA, which is going to hopefully continue down the path and have a good conversation about getting the funding because we aren't talking about a small amount of remediation that our, that our group as a developer would have to take on. We're talking millions of dollars. We are also looking at a study that's coming out in September where we'll have not only a phase two, but more of a remediation plan in place. So I understand the idea of saying, hey, we're not ready yet, let's, let's keep going down and hold off. Unfortunately, I feel like we've gotten started, and we got started because it was completely stalled for years and years and years. We did do a community reach out. We sent 60 of the abutter households invitations to come and talk to us about what we're trying to do and the project that we hope to do. And we had some people come, and they gave us all the local stuff that they wanted to see. They wanted to see more of the actual, you know, body of water, made sure that the water was tested because I think there's been some water issues in town, making sure that there was some sort of path so that the public could go in front of the water, by the water. And so we've done all that. I'm not, I'm always cautious. We deal with very sensitive projects. There are always projects that have major issues, and emotions tend to be very high on those. I don't think it's a good idea to stall this. All we're talking about is the rezoning. We're not talking about, I'm not telling you I'm building some large building, I'm not telling you I'm putting a remediation plan. I'm telling you that we need to rezone this so that we feel comfortable that there's an actual project we can start building, and we'll be working with the EPA. We are going, let me promise you, this site is on the state's mind. People know what's going on with it, and we're trying to move forward with it. So I don't want to pressure you guys into voting, but I will tell you that the train is starting to get some momentum, and I would really like to not have to stop it.
Could I respeak also? Have you completed what you're saying? So that's your vision, Ann, but we actually live surrounding that factory. And we've lived there for 20, 30, 40 years, okay? So what we're asking for is this to go back to the planning board, and we have a discussion with the neighbors and the people that it's directly affecting. And I know you're probably impatient, but we live there. So we are asking, it doesn't matter, yes, it's been 10 years, and Reed and Barton went bankrupt and walked away. Okay? So we are just asking for some time. This is thrown upon us, went to the town hall, nobody knew anything about it. We had to come tonight to find out about it. Well, guess what? We need more time.
I, listen, I'm not going to, I definitely support you.
Okay.
Whatever you want.
I'm going to go to the gentleman who's been waiting patiently behind, and then I'll come back.
Hi, John Ford, 58 Elm Street. I have the pleasure of the view of the property in front of me. When they, they took the building down and left certain portions of it, they decided they were going to put a barrier fence across it to obstruct the view. They made sure that they put in the chain link fence was just tight enough to, so that the trash pile would leak over the top of it. And they have taken some of the trash and buried it in the, in the riverway where they cleaned it up. My question is, it sounds like we're putting, it's, it's, this is like lipstick on a pig. Why are we worried about rezoning something? Does that affect the amount of money? Well, see, that's what I would have led with. I mean, I would have said, if we leave it industrial, we have, we get this much dollars. If we go, you know, ACC, we're going to have, or VCC, we're going to, we're going to be eligible for a lot more funding. All we're, all we're trying to do is reserve the fact or reserve the vote to say, you know what? We may not want an auto parts garage place with tenement houses above the property looking out over the, over the main street. We understand it's industrial, but apparently it sounds like you're saying that, by your nodding, that you're saying that the, the amount of federal funding or state funding is inherent on part the way the property's zoned. This did not, any of this didn't, you should have mentioned all of that in it and said, look, if we leave it the way it is, we get zilch. If we turn around and rezone it and come back to the visit, to visit it as to what could actually get built there, then I'm happy to investigate and look into that. But no one led with that. All they said was, this is what's going to happen, take it or leave it.
I'll let you go.
As industrial, there's no project that I see as viable, any way, shape, or form. The only way to do it is VC. And I apologize, but those are just the financials that we have.
This is a developer that's being sued, Nora. Okay, Mrs. Sweeney, and then I'll come back to the gentleman over there.
Mark Sweeney, 14 Laurel Lane. With all due respect to the, to the neighbors, and, you know, they've gone to 60 neighbors, it seems like, and they've had meetings. If you're saying you weren't informed, maybe that's on you. I don't know. But right now, we have a developer standing in front of us that wants to improve that property. We should have taken care of this three years ago and put this town hall and the senior center there, but that didn't happen. But now we have somebody, a name, a face, standing here. We do not want to delay this another four or five months until the October, fall meeting, or even a year from now to the spring meeting. She might be gone. Let's keep this train rolling, as she says. Thank you, Ann.
I just want to start with a question, just because it's something-
They're being sued in Ohio.
So the town does not own this. We're not required to clean it up. But if it starts to leak or seep into the river at all, who is responsible for that damage? Just want to first make sure I have my facts straight.
Well, I don't know that the lady is qualified to answer that. Maybe she feels she is.
Is anybody here able to answer that?
I can answer it. It's, so Reed and Barton went bankrupt, and in their bankruptcy filing, they, they left this property outside. So technically, Reed and Barton would be the ones responsible, but at the same time, there's literally nobody at Reed and Barton.
So there's nobody there?
Unless they take title, which is what I'm trying to do.
I want to venture that this, in the simplest terms, then, means that if we vote, we have a mess on our hands in our laps. If we vote yes, somebody else is going to pay to deal with that mess for us on their dime. They intend to profit. That's okay. They have a right to if they've done that. And if we vote no, we are stuck with that mess in our laps, and it is our problem. And I think ultimately, it's only a matter of time before it somehow finds a way to turn to our bill. So that would be the statement. I think those are the two things you're looking at. We pay or someone else pays.
Thank you. Mr. Washall, and I'll go.
Steve Washall, 30 Womack Road. Originally, I was going to advocate for this to remain an industrial zone when I first heard about the project. I live in the neighborhood, and I agreed full-heartedly that we need more businesses in the area. This is the closest that we'll get to an industrial park, which sounds great in theory, but it's a disaster. It's polluted, and village commercial is a better opportunity for this lot. It has a lot safer permissions than industrial does. It's not going to pollute the neighborhood again. There might be some people there, a couple more cars, some apartments, but it's going to be a lot better than a messy building that's polluting and at risk of polluting everything downriver. She's willing to put the work in, she's willing to put the money in, unless all the taxpayers want to start funding it themselves. That's our option. And I'm going to advocate for a village commercial, even though it wasn't my original intention.
Laura Parker, 4 Allen Drive. I just want to reiterate, what is on the table right now is simply a rezoning article. That is it. I believe we can all agree that industrial is not appropriate zoning for this property. No one since this property has been abandoned has shown any interest in it whatsoever. It is the town's liability by default. The fact that we now have somebody who has come forward and willing to accept that liability and is asking us right now only just to rezone it seems entirely appropriate. Just because we agree to rezone it to what is a most appropriate or a more appropriate zone doesn't mean that this developer who is standing in front of us is going to be the one to develop it. And the time to ask the questions of the developer and what her intentions are and her plans and her budget is after the property is zoned properly. Thank you.
Yes.
Good evening. Rick Dorney, 24 Talbot Drive. I'm actually a neighbor to the abutting property, and as a neighborhood and a consortium, we've gotten together over the last year and a half, and there has been dialogue. And our concern initially was safety, public safety. That building has exits spray painted on all four sides, and in short, if that ever caught fire, there'd be a lot of consequences as far as asbestos in there burning, et cetera. So, I'm sorry? Well, I don't know. I think-
Let's just keep the-
There would be some issues. It's a public safety concern. So our neighborhood has really looked at this as an issue that is front and center with us, and originally, we thought the town hall was going to be built, and we were open to that. And now there has been a developer or some interest, and that's why the planning board and the planning department has put together a zoning change. The only thing I will say, that time is important. The cost of borrowing money, it obviously is going to be increased, and with that comes a lack of interest at times. So at this time, Laura said that really the important thing is, look at this as a zoning change. There has been no interest, and I don't think there will be any interest with a business or a manufacturer just because of the condition of the property. So it's been a lot of history. There's a lot of work, back work that has been done, and I think I would like to see this zoning change move forward and a project be put together, at least a plan, and this will certainly be a start. Thank you.
Okay. I just want to, speaking with Town Council too, I just want to stress a couple of things, technical things. This article is not tied to any specific developer or development, okay? You are being asked to change the zoning- You are being asked to change the zoning on a parcel. If you do that, it, it is not contingent on any particular project, any particular developer, any particular deal, any particular anything. You are just being asked to change the zoning with, I guess, the idea that it opens up more options and makes the land more attractive to be taken off the hands. But I just want to make sure that everybody understands, there is no specific, specific commitment to any project, developer, or anything like that by your vote on this article tonight. And I would also remind everybody, I've tried to give wide latitude, but we're talking about the motion to refer back to the Planning Board. So I'm going to try to bring that discussion in today, I want to make that clear. And I also want to make clear, the town moderator owes me a beer so bad, and I can't even begin to understand. Gentleman over here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, William Francis, 66 Plain Street. I'd just be some clarification, what exactly would be the village commercial? So what does that entail? What buildings could be put there? You know, what are the characteristics of this zoning? And may I just also add that, I agree with Mr. Kimball, if you're going to do one parcel, and then there's other parcels there that are still zoned industrial, that it should all be done at once, and then we can really start to move forward. But I'm very interested in learning exactly what does, what does the VC entail? Thank you.
I'd like to move the question on the motion.
I, I hate to do this to you again, but I'm not going to allow it because he asked a specific question, I'm going to ask, I'm going to let somebody answer it, but I will let you get up and make that motion immediately after, if you want to, if you want to do that. Go ahead, Mr. Town Planner.
So village commercial would allow a mixture of uses, residential, commercial uses, whereas right now, industrial does not allow residential uses. So that was, I believe, a reason for the rezoning, because industrial zoning does not allow it. So village commercial does not all, there's also certain industrial uses not allowed at all, whereas industrial obviously allows the whole gamut of, of industrial uses. So it could allow a mixture of uses, it could allow singular uses of residential, commercial, so it does offer a variety. But I also want to point out too, that on the, on the spectrum, industrial is the most intensive zoning that we have. Village commercial is a couple steps down from that in terms of overall intensity. The other thing I want to clarify too, is this is the only parcel, this parcel, map 17th, parcel 36, that's zoned industrial. Those two parking lots that were referred to on Elm and Cross Street are actually zoned residential.
I'd like to move the question on the motion.
Third time's a charm. And there we go. We have a motion to move the question, the motion to move the question is to cut off debate. You will be voting not on the article, but on the motion to move the question. And this is on the, the motion to refer back to the Planning Board. I want to make sure that you understand that, you're moving the question on whether or not to refer the article back to the Planning Board, not on the article itself, okay? Everybody clear on that? So we're now moving, we're now going to vote to move the question on the question of referring it back to the Planning Board. All those in favor of moving the question and ending debate, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, okay? The motion passes by majority vote, is declared by the moderator. So we will now move to the vote on the motion to refer this back to the Planning Board. All those in favor of the motion to refer the article to the Planning Board, please indicate by raising your hand. All those opposed, the motion to refer back fails, as declared by the moderator. We are now back to the main motion. We're now moving on Article 17, which is, will require a two-thirds vote. Any further discussion on Article 17, he said, hopefully? Seeing no hands, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of Article 17, please indicate by raising your hand. All those opposed, Article 17 passes by a two-thirds majority vote, as declared by the moderator. Article 18.
I understand I, I have to do some special language to introduce Article 18. I'm Dan Pearson, 14 Elm Street, I'm the one who brought the petition for Article 18.
Hold on one second. Are you moving Article 18 as it's written in the warrant?
I am not, that was a second pro forma thing, I want to strike the B option. If someone, I don't know who's controlling the, the, that's great, that's perfect. Yes, so I just want to strike the B option, and then I, I have a very brief presentation, I know it's late.
Okay, first, let's get the motion down. So you're moving Article 18 as printed in the warrant, except eliminating option B.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, we have, we have a motion to move Article 18 as printed in the warrant, striking this section B. Is there a second? We have a second. Okay, yes, sir. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, it's Daniel A. Pearson, 14 Elm Street, Norton.
Okay, yes, sir, and now you've moved it, do you wish to speak to your article?
I, I do wish to speak to it, and I thank you all, I know it's late. Thank you for giving me the chance to explain the article. I am here to ask you to adopt the phrase acumen acutum as the Norton Town motto. The first word is related to the English word acumen, the second to the English word acute. Acumen acutum means a sharp point or intellect, either one, and aims at including both the town of Norton and Wheaton College. It can stand for either the sharp minds of Norton and Wheaton College, or the sharp points of Norton Lancer's lances. Norton is over 300 years old, as you know, and should have a dignified rallying cry to match its age. Other political entities do, for example, Cranston, Rhode Island, DeWigaloe, Curro, while I watch, I care, New Bedford, Lucum de Fundo, I diffuse light, and I could go on and on, Taunton, by the way, Dux, Femenefacti, a woman who was leader of the exploit. In the course of promoting a motto, I have heard some fellow citizens ask about its nature and use, and I thus offer the following Q and A. I apologize, some of this will duplicate what was in my op-ed piece in the Sun Chronicle. What is a motto, and what would it do for us? A motto is simply a word or words standing in for or encapsulating the identity and values of some entity. It is similar in that way to a commercial brand that is not only a rallying cry or symbol of a company, but a focal point, a free way to increase the economic potential of, in this case, a town. But just how much would such a free town motto actually cost? This really depends on how much Norton wants to spend. If one is considering costs such as replacing stationery, such as there is, or repainting municipal vehicles, these actions are undertaken on a regular basis anyway. The town could put a motto on Norton's Wikipedia page for free. If the town were merely to use the two words of the proposed motto without much more embellishment, that would involve no more than the personnel time needed to type it in. The short answer is that the monetary cost of a town motto would be negligible. Would the proposed motto offend anyone? The US Army's 19th Engineer Battalion uses the same words, but in a different order as Latin syntax, syntax allows, in its motto, acutum acumen. So just the words reversed. I devised the motto I did before seeing the Army motto, but in any case, sometimes the same motto is used by multiple entities. I chose the order I did to put the more important element first. Some will say a motto smacks of snobbery. Would Norton look like it's full of itself? 140 years ago, the United States Marine Corps adopted the motto semper fai, semper fidalis, ever loyal, but no one would suggest that it was adopted or has been kept for the better part of a century and a half for the sake of snobbery. It is true that the Marines justifiably call themselves the few, the proud, less formal motto, but might not Norton manifest pride in its tercentenarian town. Numerous other military units also have mottos, as do civilian institutions. To recap and conclude, at a time when the inflation caused by the price gouging of corporate fat cats has brought economic concerns to the forefront of everyone's thinking, an action that would add an economic boost and well-deserved clout to Norton at no cost that is virtually free is much to be desired. Thank you, and I am interested in answering any of your questions.
Any questions, comments, or discussions on Article 18? Mr. Freeman.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that this is an exercise in Finland while Rome burns, so it's probably good that we use Latin, that nobody will understand, we should have acted on more important things tonight.
Well, Mr. Freeman, I want to first thank you for coming up, because I thought if you did come up, it would certainly put the curse on me. And I'm sorry that you don't know Latin, but actually you do. E pluribus unum, semper fidalis, certainly you know those.
Let's keep the discussion on what we're talking about-
Mr. Moderator, I apologize.
Whether or not to approve the motion, and whether or not to approve the article. I'm not going to get into who speaks Latin too, okay? So let's just, let's keep the discussion based on that.
I'd like to have just a moment to respectfully defend myself.
No.
Yeah.
No, you speak to the article or you sit down, Mr. Freeman, one or the other.
You know, you know, if I said that to somebody, you'd call a personal attack.
Mr. Freeman, you're not listening, so please, sit down and speak to the article.
I'm smart enough not to listen to you.
I guess sitting down, you're smart enough to sit down, yes.
I, I just want to note a procedural thing, and that is, Mr. Freeman, whenever he comes up, he doesn't-
Okay, no, 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 no. I'm not letting you do it, I'm not letting you do it. We're now going to move to a vote on this article. All those in favor of Article 18, please indicate by raising your hand. All those opposed, Article 18 is defeated, as declared by the moderator. Article 19.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Chair.
I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of $3,000 from free cash for the purpose of collecting and disposing of discarded items abandoned along the roadways and throughout the town that required special handling, including all other incidental and related costs.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments or debate on Article 19? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 19, please indicate by raising your hand. All those opposed, the article passes by, you're going to have to vote, it's declared by the moderator. Is there any other business to cover before the town meeting? Seeing none, thank you for coming up, thank you for giving the time, I declare the town meeting to be adjourned.